So, thank you for coming to our July council meeting. We'd like to first excuse Mayor Mendenhall. He's on a much-needed vacation with his family. And Councilman Cardon is on a work trip. I guess you didn't say trip, but he's out of town for work. So, they're both excused tonight. And I have asked Mark Warner, our outgoing Fiesta Days chairman, to share a message with us and then offer the prayer. And then I believe Chad Argyle has the pledge. So, Mark, we'll turn it right over to you.
I guess I come up here.
Yes, come right on up.
I love the month of July. The month begins with the anniversary of our country's independence from England and a celebration of the start of our democratic republic on July 4th. The month ends with a dual celebration of the pioneer heritage unique to Utah and the founding of Spanish Fork on and around the 24th. For the past three years, my wife Mindy and I have had the privilege of being part of Fiesta Days committee. The work we have done has inspired me to see the connection between the sacrifice of our forbearers and our freedoms at the national, state, and local levels. I'd like to illustrate these connections using a story of my first of my ancestors that come to Spanish Fork. My great-great-grandparents, Mary and William Warner, sailed from Liverpool, England in the fall of 1853 and landed in New Orleans with the hope of working their way to Utah. After arriving in St. Louis, they found they needed to take jobs to provide for their family. They managed to earn enough to house and feed themselves, but not enough to continue their journey. In 1854, William was offered a job driving a wagon to Utah for a group of other settlers. The family's plan was, at that time, after arriving in Utah, he would find work and send for Mary and the three children once he had gathered enough money. Well, he found work right here in Spanish Fork, but he made little progress on making the money it would take to bring Mary and the kids. In the meantime, Mary did not wait on her husband, William. She started working by doing other people's wash, sewing, and weaving, and in two years made enough to purchase her own wagon in Oxen. And she drove her and her children to Utah. Upon arriving in Salt Lake City, she sent word to William, who walked the 50 miles to Salt Lake and brought Mary and the children home to Spanish Fork. To Mary's surprise, she was welcomed home in Spanish Fork by William's second wife. And I'll save that story for another time. We all, we are all very lucky to live in such a great community that is the legacy of the sacrifice of those who came before us. My hope is that we pick up the torch left by them and continue to work towards a community where everyone feels that they are right where they belong. Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful to meet together today in this city council, united in this free country and in this wonderful community which we live in. We ask at this time that Thou might continue to bless us as we go into this festival season with safety to everyone and that all will be able to participate and be safe and welcome and enjoy the festivities before us. We ask for these favors and blessings and do so humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mark.
Will the audience please rise? Congratulations.
I congratulate you, Mr. President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on our agenda, is Morgan here yet? I know she's running a little bit late, so we will wait until she arrives and we will go right in to public comments portion of our night. Are there, how many are here for public comments? A couple? Okay. Yeah, just, everyone has three minutes, a total of 15 minutes, so just make sure when you're coming up, you're not repeating each other. You guys probably know how it rolls, so just come up to the podium and state your name and there'll be a timer up there.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm James Westwater, a nearly 20-year resident of Spanish Fork. My wife and I moved here to surround ourselves with the great natural beauty and healthy environment of Spanish Fork. In our views, Spanish Fork had a small-town, healthy, quiet, peaceful, somewhat rural feel. We love living here. And I consider Spanish Fork to be well-run. Thank you in absentia, Mayor Mendenhall, city council members, and city manager, Mr. Perrins. But I and other residents have a very deep concern about the negative impacts on our community that an inland port and its likely subsequent expansion would have on us, the residents. As a result, I have some pointed questions to ask. Has Spanish Fork City conducted and made crystal clear to the public a thorough, detailed, rigorous, science-based, independent, professional study of the health and environmental impacts of the proposed inland port and its likely subsequent growth and expansion? If so, I'd like to know where I can find such a report. I heard today from the chief executive officer of the Tempanogus Nation that it's likely there are Native American burial sites and artifacts on the proposed site that will require very special attention before the project begins. The study should include all the human health consequences of the project would possibly or likely have, including decrease in life expectancy, increased noise, light, and harmful air pollution, increases in asthma, COPD, miscarriages, birth defects, and cancers, loss of farming and farmland, effects on our quality of life, loss of valuable wetlands, the effects on Utah Lake, and the increase in truck traffic and traffic congestion. How will it affect our taxes? Will public funds be used to benefit private investors? What are the impacts on the heat waves, droughts, and wildfires associated with global warming and climate change? Are all these multiple inland ports, you know, there were just, a new one was announced today, the Gold Spike inland ports. Do we really need and are they necessary? I don't think so. Show us the legitimate need, please. And please conduct the recommended critical study and make it very public before going forward with what we may come to deeply regret, pardon me. An inland port may be a fancy name for an unnecessary, health-harming, farm-replacing, mega warehouse, truck, and air pollution hub. Again, we love living here. We don't want to see it spoiled. Thank you for hearing these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Hi, my name is Sarah Graham. I grew up in this area in Provo. I've come to talk about the inland port project as well. Others have talked about the lack of consultation with local communities, especially those most affected, such as, like the farmers, as the project moved forward. I'm also concerned about that and especially concerned with the community I believe should have been consulted first but has completely overlooked. And, except for James Westwater here. They're the people indigenous to this area, the Tempanogus people, who are written about in 1776 after the Dominguez Escalante expedition. And their homeland surrounded the lake, which was once called Tempanogus Lake, and it stretched up and down the Wasatch Front. And this area here in Spanish Fork was a well-known area for hunting and fishing. The project proposal mentions a simple search of the National Register of Historical Places and the land areas of federally recognized tribes and says the search did not find anything relevant in the proposed area. But it is a well-known fact that the project is within the boundaries of the Spanish Fork Indian Farm Reservation set up in the 1850s where Tempanogus people lived and were buried. I'm surprised no mention was made of this reservation or the ancient mounds in this area, like the Hinckley mound, covered recently in West Provo. And, or, you know, how this land is the home of the Tempanogus people. So, in the city hall that happened last month, Mary Meyer, the chief executive of the Tempanogus Nation, asked what would be done if graves or artifacts were unearthed during the project. And when she asked that question, it was clear that the project representative, Ben Hart, was caught off guard. He mentioned an environmental survey, which would include an archaeological survey, but there was no insurance that it would be appropriately thorough. And I talked to other speakers afterward at that town hall, which backed up my feeling on that. And after the, after this question was asked, remember, someone who's a Spanish Fork farmer, Jackie Larson of Seven Bar Farms, she talked to me and said that her ancestor, Joseph E. Beck, was an agent at the reservation and that he had himself buried Indigenous people on the reservation. And I also found, in my own research, in annual reports, another agent who mentioned burying people himself. So, I would like, my request is that you work with the Tempanogus Nation Council with an archaeologist of their choosing. They know several, they know archaeologists who are qualified and to make sure that the surveys are all, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
I'm not a resident of Spanish Fork, but I am a resident of Utah County.
Will you state your name, please?
My name is Denise Devank. I run Utah Valley Promoculture Classroom Gardens and Greenhouse. My big question is, first, has an environmental impact study been ordered, which is the federal law, before you do such a big project that could involve the environment in effective and possible negative ways? Second of all, how many farmers? I just want to show hands real fast. How many farmers are here tonight? Okay. How many farmers actually own land in this 2,200 acres or owned land that had to be purchased in order to do your project? Could someone answer that question from the city?
This isn't the time for that.
Really?
Yeah, just keep talking, cherish your thoughts.
Because that's the biggest reason people really want to know what is going to be affected by this. And the farmers of generations here in Utah County are losing land right and left. Provo, Orem, McCords, Cooks, Grant-Holdaway lost everything. Okay? I don't want to see any more farmland disappear in this valley. You may think you're going to truck in all this food and supplies because you're doubling the population at the Growth and Prosperity Summit that's with the former governor, current governor, and all the mayors. We're so excited. Let's double the population of Utah. We already don't have enough water. I just want to know, how are you going to feed people when the trucks don't come in if you bring in this many people into this valley? Without farmers, you have no food. Please think carefully before you let big business dictate what you do to profit the city yourselves because that is a huge concern, what's happening in Utah. This doubling of the population, inland ports, bringing in more trucking, more pollution, more damage, and losing farm properties. And generations of farmers are being forced, "Oh, sorry, we have to extend Geneva Road to the airport." You have to take out your house. Four-generation farmer. Same thing happened to Grant-Holdaway. Same thing to McCord's Corn Mates. Business gone. You cannot do this to your existing people that have been here. Please, all of you, consider that very carefully before you make the same mistake. Ask Tula how they like their inland port. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? So, those were specifically for the inland port authority and we have that on our items of business later on, so I don't want the three of you to think we're ignoring you right now. I think we will address your questions during that time when we're going to be having a discussion, if that's okay. Matt Hargraves, do you want to come up here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll just add, I'm here for a different purpose on the agenda, but just working with a lot of farmers up and down the state, I saw the behavior. There's also potential benefit to agriculture from the inland port as well. And so, I think it's wise to review and to speak with many and get input, but I don't want to just assume that it's a complete detriment to agriculture. Obviously, we are, there is loss of farm ground throughout our state and I think wise planning is important, but there are some benefits to it as well. So, that's all I'd say.
And what business are you with?
So, I work with the Utah Farm Bureau.
Okay.
I'm not here representing them for this issue here today.
Okay, thanks, Matt. All right, our public comments section is over and I believe Morgan is here, so we're going to go back and invite Morgan to come on in. No horses tonight. Okay, Morgan, we would like to invite you up here to tell us about your recent accomplishment. You're the second-time champion.
Three times.
Three times?
Don't sell her short.
Wow! I'm just reading my notes. Tell us about all of this.
So, I'm three-time state champion for the high school state finals and in barrel racing. And I've won it three times in a row these last three years and it's been really exciting.
And you're here from Spanish Fork?
Yep.
All three with Slingshot?
Yep, all on Slingshot.
And what program are you with when you're doing this?
The UHSRA, Utah High School Rodeo.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we just wanted to recognize you. We appreciate our agriculture roots. As all of you know, we're so happy that you're here today. Do you guys have any, any other?
So, I got a question for you.
Okay.
So, high school is different, obviously, than PRCA.
Yeah.
But how do your times compare with PRCA riders?
So, they have like different patterns, but usually like it's a standard pattern. This one wasn't a standard pattern, but it really just depends. Like sometimes I'll go to barrel races with like girls my age or girls that are in the PRCA and I'll compete against them, so.
And do you beat them?
Sometimes.
There you go.
Yeah.
When are we going to see you in our rodeo?
I'm not in our rodeo. I'm not old enough.
One day, no.
Oh, one day, yeah.
After high school?
Yep, yeah, after high school, for sure.
And also on our notes, it says Slingshot won Horse of the Year.
Yeah.
Tell us a little more about that.
So, she won Horse of the Year. We actually didn't know. We were down taking pictures and we heard them over the announce it and they said Slingshot Lane AQHA Horse of the Year. So, I went up there, got the prize, and it was pretty cool, so, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're super excited.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Morgan, what was the prize for the horse?
It was a Yeti Cup.
What?
Yeah, a Yeti Cup.
Like it wasn't a better bag of oats or maybe, I mean, come on.
Yeah, I know. She should have got us something. She got a lot of treats after, though.
I was gonna say, I know Grandma and Grandpa, you do better than that for Slingshot, right?
Well, Morgan, this is your third recognition. It says certification, certificate of recognition is awarded to Morgan Bexstrom and Slingshot. Congratulations.
Perfect, thank you.
So, come on up here. Mayor Mendenhall wanted a signed photo so we could put it in his office. Okay, I'll take this.
Since they have them, I think they should put their announcement.
I was going to suggest that.
We have like the EeCaw moment, but maybe they just took it away from us. Thanks, Morgan.
Congrats.
So, we also, Morgan, before you and your family leave, we, a couple of weeks ago when we were honoring a couple of other talented youth as well, Lieutenant Governor Henderson sent us a message. And she sent it, including to you as well. So, if you're okay, you guys can hang for a second longer. We'd like to play this.
I'm Lieutenant Governor Debra Henderson and I believe congratulations are in order for some of the incredible girls from my hometown of Spanish Fork. Your accomplishments on the ball field and in the arena have made us so proud and have shown all of Utah that hard work pays off in a big way. Lady Dons, congratulations on your historic three-peat. You took care of business all season long and earned this moment. The incredible Morgan Bexstrom, being another barrel racing state title, that was a fast final run, but you've been fast for years. Last, certainly not least, Trista Ring brought home the state title for girls' cutting. You have an awesome talent. It's so much fun to watch. Thanks to all of you for representing Spanish Fork so well. Take it from a girl who defied the odds herself. There's nothing you can't accomplish. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Morgan. All right, next, we are going to have council comments and to kick that off, I want to get these guys ready and welcome everyone with a big yee-haw! We love July. We're so excited for the next two weeks of events and I know many of you will be sharing ideas. Before we go to that, I want to start with Councilman Euler and just come down this way and we're going to talk about what we've been doing the last couple of weeks on our committees or anything you want to share.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Just excited for Fiesta Days. I don't have anything to report for council comments.
All right. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you. I just, the 24th celebration in Spanish Fork, Utah is my favorite celebration. It lasts a long time, but the thing that I most get excited about is the chance that families have an opportunity to get together and participate in so many activities that goes on. If you're not coming to the parade, to the rodeo, and the other 100 activities that are going on, I encourage you to take a minute and take part of these things because, thank you to some awesome volunteers. Stacy's on our committee and she's done it for many years and she does such an awesome job in the committee. It takes a lot of planning and a lot of effort and a lot of volunteers to make this happen in Spanish Fork. And we're noted for such a celebration of our Fiesta Days. It's so exciting to be a part of that. And so, for eight years, I've been a part of that and I'm excited for another one. The Riding Club, they always run such a great rodeo. And if you've known that, we're a gold star rodeo. It's funny, on one of my other second jobs, they keep asking me, "Why do they keep saying we're a gold star rodeo?" And I says, "It's just because we're the best." And it's that simple. I don't know how else to say it, but we're just the best. And come and see it. And I've invited some people from outside of our community that's never been here. Hopefully, they'll show up. But I'm excited for our Fiesta Days celebration and all of that goes along with it. Thank you, Mayor Potem.
Okay, Councilman Marshall.
It's been a while since I've been here. I'm not sure how this works anymore. Thank you for holding down the fort. I appreciate it and sorry I've been absent a couple of times. It's been a rough week to be a first responder. And so, I just want to say thank you for those men and women that just show up every single day and do their job. I don't know how many texts we got in the last couple of weeks, but it was just one after the other after the other of just terrible things to have to show up and deal with. But they go out there and they do it every time and they come back the next day. So, Chief House, Chief Johnson, tell your men and women, we appreciate them more than anything. As a community, as a city council, we appreciate them and thank you for their hard work and efforts. I am looking forward to Fiesta Days as well. It's a good time. It always, when I was in school, it always reminded me it was like the summer's over, right? You know, you get to the end of the parade and everything closes up and you walk off the park and you're like, "Ah dang, school starts in like three weeks." But as you go older, grow older, you realize that it's such an awesome time to bring the family together and bring the community together. And that's what makes Spanish Fork, Spanish Fork. Mr. Westwater talked about the small-town feel. I agree with you 100%. That's why I'm still here. I've been here since, I don't know, 1980, 1979. And it's, the reason we stay is because it's a small-town feel. We want to make sure we maintain it as much as possible. We have to grow as well. I'd like my kids to be able to grow up here and experience the same thing I am. And so, to do that, you need a place for them to live and unfortunately, that means growth and we need to deal with that in a very responsible way. But Fiesta Days is that moment that we sort of put things on pause and we get together as a community and we forget about some stuff and we just celebrate and enjoy each other's company. And so, I'm looking for the next three weeks. Thankfully, it's a three weeks. You know, back in the day, it was like a day. There was a, you know, a car show on one end and a parade on the other end and you're like, "Oh, that's it." Now, it's a, it's an event. It's a long one, it's good. So, congratulations, you've done a wonderful job. Thanks to volunteers, all decked out in the red. Appreciate you coming down here. That's it.
Okay, I will turn the time over to that committee soon. They have their whole spotlight. A couple of the other things I wanted to talk about, I sit on the library board and I got some updated numbers from our library director, Scott Ayla. And he said June was another record-breaking month with 67,000-plus checkouts. That broke May's record. So, congratulations. Summer reading ends at the end of this month. Our completion party for all ages will be Monday, July 31st, and that will be over in the park, I believe. And then, we're also doing a Food for Fines food drive this month for Tabitha's Way and we will waive up to $20 in fines per account for food donations. So, if you have some fines that have been accumulating, bring in some canned goods and let's help out Tabitha's Way. And then, Nick, will you share the picture of Scott? Last month on our, in our board meeting, Scott's wife was at work. So, Scott had me set up the Zoom call in our room next door. Scott ran home to be with three kids. He gets on the Zoom call and he's juggling a baby and two toddlers and so he's this dude at home dealing with kids and all of our board are women. I'm like, "Scott, this is like the best moment to see a dad at home juggling the baby that doesn't want the bottle and us women are just chilling out in the boardroom." So, I got permission to share this, but he's just amazing and I thought that was just a really cool moment. I wanted to give him a shout-out. And then, let's see, Parks and Rec. So, my kids are all in their 20s, 30s. We haven't done Parks and Rec for a number of years. And so, my oldest grandson started T-Ball in June and he had his last game and there he is. And the last game is Water Day. So, they put a little pool at T-Ball on home plate so when you run around, I mean, it's crazy. They don't even keep score. Some of the dads were having issues, like Grandpa Beck. He's like, "They're not even keeping score. How are they going to win?" These kids had pure joy that night, Dell. Like when I left, they were squirting each other. They were jumping in the pool. The, all of the coaches were out there with the kids, the volunteers, their staff. It was such an incredible night to watch these four-year-olds running around and playing. And I just thought, "This is part of our small-town feel right here tonight." So, I just wanted to thank you guys for all the work because that was a lot of work, getting all that water out there and thank you for that. Okay, Kathleen with the chamber, since Jesse's not here tonight, he asked me to invite you up and give us a quick update on all things Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for the time, everybody, it's good to see you, your hats look great. All right, so I just wanted to start off by letting everybody know what we're up to for Fiesta Days the next couple of weeks. So from July 20th through the 25th, I want to remind everybody to try to take some time to walk down Main Street, because the sidewalk sales will be going on. It's really fun, it's kind of, they're, they're clearance sales, kind of spring clean out, but it's a great way to kind of see the specialties that we have right here on Main Street, and also get some really fun deals at the same time. So those will be going on from July 20th through the 25th, on, all along Main Street, and even businesses that are slightly off should be participating. Then we are doing our second ping pong grab event. So businesses, we did this for the first time last year, and businesses sponsored ping pong balls. Each ball represents a prize, so it's connected to goods or services or prizes that are sponsored by local businesses. Coin Crazy has donated a lot of arcade cards. We've got $40 gift certificates from Texas Roadhouse, we have 25 of those. So lots of local businesses have sponsored these prizes, and we'll be passing them out this year during the parade. So last year, we had about 60 balls, and I was excited about that for our first year. This year, we have almost 400 already, and we're still collecting sponsorships. So it should be a really, really fun time, so inviting everybody to come out to the parade, and just look out for our float, we have Zion's Bank, and their Jeep is gonna be in our float, and then we have several businesses that will be walking as well, tossing out balls and candy and lots of other swag and fun things like that. So it should be a really good time. For ribbon cuttings, we have a lot coming up, and since this is the only meeting in July, I'll just share the ones that we have coming up for August as well. The first one, we've got Ever Bowl is, we're doing a ribbon cutting for them on July 14th at noon, that's this Friday. I Heart Mac and Cheese is scheduled to open up and cut their ribbon on August 15th. We've got Advanced IV Solutions ribbon cutting on August 18th. Petty and Maine is celebrating their ribbon cutting on August 23rd, and the Mint Facial Bar on Main Street is celebrating a ribbon cutting on August 30th. So we're gonna be pretty busy, and one final thing, we are hosting the Meet the Candidates Night for the upcoming city council. Well, we're hosting two, the first one will be on August 3rd, and that's just gonna be right across in the Heritage Room here at the library at 6:00 PM. So encourage everybody to come and meet the city council candidates for some open interview and public discourse. Thanks for the time.
Thanks Kathleen. All right, we are-
Madam Mayor Protem, I'm under direct orders from Mayor Mendenhall-
Oh, really?
-for his council comments.
Okay.
He sent a video and asked me to play it.
I will give him permission.
I'm really excited to tell you that the design of the new recreation and aquatic center is almost complete. Here's a sneak peek of the site plan and external renderings of what is going to be an amazing facility for our community to have. In just a few weeks, we'll be sitting down with the architect of the project and our Parks and Recreation Director, and sharing all of that with you. This conversation will include a virtual tour of the facility and exactly what features it will contain. Stay tuned for more details.
I really loved using Hawaii.
I really did too. The waves flashing on him. That was worth it. Thanks Nick, thanks Mayor. All right, first up is the rodeo committee. Who's in charge of you all, Nick? Nick, come on up.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm gonna invite the rest of my crew to come up here with me. We're excited, it's getting down to crunch time. The, the rodeo's coming fast, so one, one week from tomorrow will be rodeo. We have a good turnout tonight, a bunch of us. I want to thank the mayor and council for their support with the rodeo. It's gonna be a fun year. We have the motorcycles back by popular demand. Everybody loves those guys. So that'll be fun, J.J. Harrison's our clown this year, he does an awesome job. Unfortunately, tickets are sold out, but get your tickets early for next year. Tickets will go on sale at 8:00 AM, the Tuesday, July 25th, the day after the rodeo. So get on there, have your pick of them, get them bought then, and, and you won't be on the outside looking in this year, so.
Just FYI, FYI, by 8:30, you don't get your pick, you just get what's left.
Yeah, yeah, be Johnny on the spot, for sure.
For sure. Like, what the heck?
Oh, okay. Do you want me to? Let's have our royalty come up, we have Bailey, Miriam, and Riley, and we'll kind of let them introduce themselves.
We brought snacks.
Nice.
Ew.
Thank you.
We like snacks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse's not here, I'll take Jesse's.
You always gotta have snacks, right? You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So my name is Bailey Mackey, and I am the Spanish Fork Fiesta Day's queen this year, and I'm so excited for the rodeo. I am originally from Evanston, Wyoming, and I went to school at Utah State in Logan, Utah. Funny enough, all my roommates I ever met in my college career are from Spanish Fork. So I was like a second family coming over here to Spanish Fork, and they talked me into being a part of the rodeo, and I've loved it so much so far. And they said we're sold out, and I believe this is year 74 of annual consecutive sellouts, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it's 74 years. So make sure you buy your tickets early for next year.
Hey everyone, my name is Miriam Brophy, I'm Fiesta Days First Attendant with Bailey and Riley. I absolutely love this rodeo, I grew up going to this rodeo every year. I remember when this arena was more wooden, it wasn't so upgraded, and I remember the first year I went to this rodeo with the new grandstand, but super exciting, I get to be in this rodeo this year on the other side of the stands, but in the dirt, in the arena. Some things about me, I grew up in Mapleton, and I went to Maple Mountain, which is in Spanish Fork, and then my family moved to Payson a year, about a year ago. And with this rodeo this year, we're gonna have Breast Cancer Awareness Night, and then Patriotic Night, and the committee and the queens will dress up in those colors. And then, as mentioned before, J.J., the rodeo con's gonna be there, he's a really funny, cool guy. And that's all I have to say, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have to put this down, I'm a little short. Hello, I'm Riley Voorhees, I'm actually from Spanish Fork. I was actually in the royalty last year as well, I was the First Attendant last year. And I love this rodeo, I have grown up in this rodeo, I have gone to this rodeo literally my entire life, so it's super exciting to be representing it again. Few things about me, I obviously love riding horses, I go to Snow College, I'm gonna be a sophomore this, next year actually with Miriam. Me and Miriam go to Snow together. A few years ago, we actually introduced a fifth day to the rodeo, and that is the Extreme Bulls Night, and that is on Saturday. And yeah, that should be super fun.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, that is also the day that our visiting royalty will come. I forgot about that.
From everywhere.
From everywhere, from all royalties.
Miss Rodeo Arkansas, Miss Rodeo Washington, my, my, well.
Yeah, Miss Rodeo Arkansas and Miss Rodeo Arizona came last year. That's, they'll ride in the pre-show, I think.
Well, enjoy your week next week, guys, kicking that off.
All right, they elected me to share a piece of news, Nick, if you'll pull up the next slide. This year, as, as Nick mentioned, the tickets for the rodeo will go on sale on Tuesday morning at, hey Dale, leave those alone. She specifically put those over there. I can't believe this. On Tuesday morning, the 25th of July, rodeo tickets will go on sale for the 2024 rodeo, and when I came to Utah, or, sorry, when I came to Spanish Fork, my first Fiesta Days with 20, or no, that was a long time ago, 2005, that was my first Fiesta Days celebration. And I was only involved with the rodeo and the periphery, but generally speaking, the rodeo tickets really didn't start selling with any kind of speed until about the 4th of July. That was always kind of the marker of, hey, it's time to get tickets, and so we'd see ticket sales really increase on the 5th of July when it would open up. And we would still be selling them the night of every rodeo, and, and we would eventually sell out most nights, right? But, but we would have tickets, anybody could get tickets, maybe the day of. And through the years, the ticket, the, the desire to buy our tickets has increased dramatically, so much so, and maybe we made some, some history and, and had great success, of course, having a rodeo in 2020, when we had, if you recall, the 1st of June, that council meeting 2020, where we kind of committed ourselves, we're in, even though we were in the midst of that pandemic. And kind of cemented ourselves as, as being able to do something successful safely and bravely during that time, and, and since then, our, our ticket demand has really increased. So this year, for the first time, the rodeo sold out, I, I've been saying March, but I think it's May, right, Nick? Really sold out in May. So not only has it, has it moved from July 4th, right, tickets sold out in May. Last year, we experienced a phenomenon that was quite disappointing in our ticket sales, and that was a lot of tickets being purchased by, by one, two, or three specific buyers, we would probably call them scalpers. And laws don't allow us to really do anything about scalping, but we didn't like it anyway. And so we've, we've made some adjustments to how tickets are sold, to make it so that we don't have quite the ability for scalpers to buy the, the volume that they bought. I'll get these numbers wrong, but I'll be pretty close. Last year, not for this year's rodeo, but the 2022 rodeo, about 10,000 tickets. So 8,500 tickets a night, five nights, you can do the math, about 10,000 tickets, so almost a fifth, a little bit more than a fifth rather, of our tickets were bought by what we think were scalpers. This year, that number's been reduced significantly by some of the changes that we've made, we're only in a couple thousand, and we think that next year will probably be just a little bit less than that, we hope to be a little bit less than that, which is good, right? We want our residents, our community, to be able to buy tickets to our rodeo through the, the right source, and that's sfcitytics.com. If you go on the internet and search for the Fiesta Days rodeo, the number one search result won't be sfcitytics. People are paying a lot of money to the search engine, so they show up top, and they'll say things like Fiesta Days rodeo, it'll look just like you want it to, but you click on it, and it'll look just like our page, but it isn't, and you'll pay 40, 50, 60, 70 dollars for your tickets. If you're not buying your tickets from sfcitytics.com, you're paying too much, you're not buying from us. They then are coming to our website and buying tickets from us, and buying it for the price that we sell, 10, 15, 20 dollars, whatever it may be, they're selling it to you for 40, 50, or 60 bucks. So sfcitytics.com is where you want to go the night after, or the morning after the rodeo, 8:00 AM. We've talked about this with you in a couple of other meetings, the committee wants to make sure that the community understands this year, we'll make some adjustments to our ticket prices and to our ticket structure. And the rodeo has had basically one price for most of its tickets, but for maybe the grandstand and, and a couple of nights, we've offered a, a children's seating. This year, a, a children's ticket option, and this year, when we start selling tickets the morning of, of July 25th, there will be a slightly different structure. If you would, thanks Nick, you probably wanted me to do that, didn't you?
Either way.
Well, you didn't defend the donuts, so I'm kind of out of sorts here. The new structure will, will just recognize where the value of the seats are, and, and so there will be four areas of tickets. In some areas, the tickets will be more expensive, and, and you probably should expect, if I'm sitting on the front row, I'm gonna pay a little bit more than maybe a few rows up, right? We also have heard from families that they continue to want and, and need the ability to buy some family-friendly ticket prices. And we did have tickets for a child, I could self-select, I have a child ticket, there was no control over that. And so, me and, and my nefarious thinking, I might say all eight of my tickets are gonna be children's prices, and I could do that. Instead of letting me self-select now a children's ticket, there are a handful of areas, three or four around the arena, where the tickets are going to be a little bit less than what they have been. And so a family probably will be able to get into the rodeo if, if they're looking for value, price, in price over maybe view, they'll be able to get into the rodeo probably cheaper, next year's rodeo than, than they would even this year. And so, the, the end result of what we're doing isn't to increase the ticket price, in fact, we're, we're shooting for this restructuring of prices to be price change neutral, right? We're, we're just allocating the value where we understand from our studies of our ticket purchasing, where the value is. And then, in, in the end, the revenue to the rodeo will be, should be almost exactly the same, that's been the goal in what we do. And so, when, when fans log in to buy tickets on the morning of the 25th, the, the ticket prices will be a little bit different than the generic, almost one price for any seat in the arena as they have seen. We want to make sure that people are aware of that and understand that. Do you have any questions about that? I know that you've understood that, we've talked about this with you for, for five or six months, but do you have any questions, or maybe some that you've heard from others in the public?
Just to, I just want to make a comment and make sure that they understand that our, our goal in, in all of this, it was real frustrating to us to hear that 10,000 tickets of our tickets were sold and people were paying over a hundred dollars for those tickets, when our sole goal has always been to keep those tickets affordable, so that our community can afford to go to the rodeo, and families can go, so that you, you wasn't putting out, if you were buying five tickets from a scalper, five, at a hundred bucks apiece, obviously, that's an exorbitant amount. And so our efforts, and that was from the council, because we were frustrated to hear this, and thank you to what they've done to fix this a little bit, to make this better, so that we can continue to keep them, and when they invite you to go to Spanish Fork Smith Tex, or, what is it?
Smith Tex. SfCityTics.com.
SfCityTics.com. The reason for that is because we're, we're doing our best to keep those tickets low that sold families to go. Is this what's about, this is what it's about, is our families, and being able to afford to go to these things, so thank you, thanks for what you did.
Yeah, I remember a, a kind of a flustered, frustrated, and, and you weren't mad at me, but frustrated and disappointed at the world last year call, that you were, you were seeing that scalping happening, happening around you, so, yeah, anything else we can do?
Thanks Seth. Thank you rodeo committee, thanks for the treats too. You guys can duke that out later.
The donuts are excellent, thank you.
Throw your hats on the ground, let's go at it.
Okay, next up, I would like to invite our 2023 Fiesta Days Committee and our Events Coordinator Emily Harriman and Assistant Director Bronco Hunter to all come up and, and kick this off. Let's see what you guys have to share with us.
Well, we are very excited to be here. I am Emily Harriman, the Special Events Coordinator. By now, all of you should have got your Fiesta Days magazine in your mailbox. I want to point out a really great article in the magazine, it was actually written by the Derringtons, and it was where our, our theme came from this year, right where you belong. So I'd just like to encourage everybody to take a look at the magazine and read the article, so you'll have an understanding of what our committee went through last year. So I'd like to introduce our committee to you. We've got the Derringtons, who are our current chairman, the Warners, who are our past chairman, and then our, the Andersons, who are the chair-elect, and I'll go ahead and let them all speak.
Well, like she said, we're Max and Amy Derrington, and we just want to share, first of all, a couple of things, if you have read the article, we can't thank the first responders enough, because the fact that Max is here is a miracle, we call him Miracle Max, and we owe his life to the first responders of Spanish Fork City, and we are ever so grateful that he is standing here with us today. And then we wanted to highlight some of our favorite activities, and the one that I have chosen is new this year, so it's not a favorite yet, but it will be, and it's especially going to be a favorite, because we get to be the judges. That's why I want you to be aware of it, is the, a new pie baking contest, and you can bring your pies to the library on February 24th, or, excuse me, July 21st, which is Friday. The drop-off time will be 6:00 to 6:30, and then we will announce the winner at 7:15, right before we do Spanish Fork's Got Talent.
So Amy, let's clarify-
Sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, clarify, because you-
No, I was just going to say, clarify, because you said the library. Let's clarify, the old library.
The old library, yes.
Where everything happens.
Thank you.
Don't bring it up. Well, maybe I'll be here at the new library.
Yes.
Helping collect pies. Let's leave it at that.
Thank you. The old library where all of the activities are happening, just to that stage there. Did you have a?
So my next question was, did you elect you to be the tasters of the pie?
Well, what do you think? Yes, all of us get to be the taster.
Perks the column being the chair.
You guys get donuts, so we get pie.
And also, we don't have treats for you, but we do have a T-shirt for you. So we'll bring that up to you. If you haven't bought your Fiesta Days T-shirt, it's not too late. They are available at the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you.
So I would like to thank all of the Spanish Fork employees, Emily Harriman, Bronco Hunter, and the Spanish Fork Park and Recreation, the many, many hours that they will be putting in the next couple of weeks for all of the events that are going on. I think it's really not really known how many hours they put in, the diligence that they do with that. So thank you for them for their many, many hours of doing that. I want to talk a little bit about the play, the community theater, Spanish Fork Community Theater, Matilda. Having done that in high school, I know the many hours that they spend in preparation to be able to put on this production. So I just want to let people know about that. It will be happening July 20th and 21st, 27th, excuse me, 28th, 7 o'clock. And then there's two matinees on July 22nd and the 24th at 2:00 PM. And it's all happening at the Spanish Fork High School. So it's a chance to kind of get out of the heat, get inside for where it's nice and cool, and enjoy some great theater. The theater productions are always very, very well done, so thank you for that.
We're Mark and Mindy Warner. As Amy said, we are the outgoing chair. We've had a great time. It's been a fun three years, we've met some great people, and been able to see firsthand how Fiesta Days gets pulled off, and it's quite amazing. I wanted to talk about the children's parade, that's kind of my favorite thing. It's on Saturday, July 22nd, it starts at 9:00 AM, and it starts at the park school and goes all the way down Center Street to the park. And the first 1,000 children that are entered into the parade get a free rodeo ticket.
Carnival.
Oh. That's right.
1,000 free rodeo tickets.
I had that on my mind, we were talking about the rodeo. We might have a lot of people volunteering to be in it.
Parents could drop their kids off at the gate.
Anyway, it's a fun event, so get your lawn chairs and line up around Center Street and watch the kids.
Thanks, Mindy.
Well, everybody knows I'm a self-proclaimed know-it-all, okay? And when it comes to cooking and food, I'm a world expert. And I want to chastise Amy, she took my category, we didn't pre-talk, but I am really excited about the pie baking contest. I really pushed hard to bring this back. We used to do it years ago, and Ashley entered one, you may not believe that, but that's true. I have the ribbons at home. But I'm also excited because I also proclaimed that I'm one of the judges. So again, on Friday, the 21st, please enter the pie baking contest. The more pies, the better for me.
We're Garrett and Stephanie Anderson. We are the chair-elect, so we're coming onboard for three years. We don't know what we're getting into, but we'll find out for the next few weeks. But we're excited to be a part of this and excited to give back to our community a little bit. We love Spanish Fork, and it's a great place to be. I want to talk about the food trucks and the craft fair over at the Old City Library at the city park. We have 65 craft booths over there at the park, and we've got several food trucks and vendors there. So we can eat lunch, we can eat dinner, go buy a little trinket for your kids or whatever at the craft fair, too. But it's kind of a great place to be over at the park, and that goes on from the 20th to the 24th. So a lot of days that you can come down and participate in that.
I'm just going to put a cute plug, not a cute, but a plug-in for my cute niece, who's going to be helping with the pancake breakfast this year on the 24th, right before the parade, from 8:00 to 10:00, just at the city park. So we've got a great food lineup. Apparently, we must be hungry, because that's what we've been mentioning is food. So food's an important part in the partying of Fiesta Days, so.
My name is Bronco Hunter, I'm the assistant Parks and Recreation director, and before you get your shirts, you got to hear a little bit from me. When I was in college, I housed it for a college football coach who traveled the country with his son, who was also, he was retired, but he was coaching college football as well. And so he lived all over the nation, and I always asked him, like, why in the heck would you ever live in Minnesota? Because he always talked about how big the mosquitoes were in the summer and how cold the winters were. And he's like, it's all about the people. And so I really don't have a favorite event, because they're all really good, but it's all about the people. I really appreciate the volunteers for Stacy, for Emily, who put in all the hours, starting on July 25th, when the rodeo tickets go on, so we start planning for next year's Fiesta Day celebration. And so I just look forward to these next three weeks, spending time with all of you, and appreciate all the work that's been put in, and now we'll reap the benefits of playing a little bit together, so thank you.
Thank you, and as you're handing everyone their shirts, I have a thank you gift for each of you, so don't go sit down. I just want to publicly thank each one of you, because we really do start meeting in August. Thank you. We start meeting in August, and we meet every, the first Monday of every month, and start planning the next year. And so it's a time commitment, but I think by the time you're in your third year, it's kind of sad that you're done, right? Maybe a little exciting, but.
Sure.
But sad, like, it is all about the people, like Bronco said. It's so much fun, but it's all about the people. So I just want to publicly thank each one of you for the time you've put in, the commitment the Andersons are putting, like, we're going to do it, we don't know what we're in for, you're about to find out. So I want to thank each of you, I brought you a gift. So Warners.
Is it food?
No. Dang it. I missed the mark on that one.
Thank you.
And Amy. Kara, and then Emily and Bronco. Thanks, guys. Okay, so I think just let everyone know, if you didn't get a magazine, Parks and Rec Department has more if you want to swing by and get one. They also have the T-shirts that they just gave us on sale, and everything is also on the Spanish Fork City website. So there's no excuse, no reason you should miss anything, because it's about to kick off.
How much are they?
Eight dollars.
Eight?
Eight dollars, and then the double XL and larger are.
Twelve.
Stacy, do we know who designed the shirts this year?
Yes, Emily, tell us about our designer, because every year, we just think we have the best design. And again, I think it's the best one. So last year, we did a logo contest, and Amy Creer from Spanish Fork won. And Mark Warner said, that logo contest was so good, let's do it again this year. So we're like, okay, Mark, we'll do it. And Amy Creer won again. And it was funny, though, because all of us were actually talking at the meeting about what we visualized for the logo. And then her logo entry came in a couple days later. It was exactly what all of us were thinking of, and it worked out so great.
It's a special one.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, guys, if you want to keep your hats on the rest of the time, you are welcome to.
I'm not.
I'm going to take it off now, I have that hair.
I know. Fluff, fluff, fluff the hair.
Okay, we'll go on to consent items.
Motion to approve consent items, A and B.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Argyle, second by Councilman Euler, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, I'll also say yes, thank you. Okay, number eight, we have three public hearings. The first one is a public hearing for the ordinance regarding the Minor Goodwin Annexation. And we have Mr. Von Pikel to address us.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and council members. There we go. You can see the location of the proposed annexation, it's on the far east boundary of the city. It's along the railroad tracks there, across from Mapleton, and just south of 100 South. As you zoom in, you can see the property there, is the Minor property, the Goodwin property, and then some parcels that are Rocky Mountain Power-owned properties. The recommendation, it's part of an existing island, I should point that out, this whole area. Is there a laser? Well, you can see it outlined from the city boundary in red dashes, and then the railroad tracks is the Mapleton boundary. So it's part of an existing island of unincorporated county. The recommendation is to give it a zoning designation of rural residential, and that complies with our, let me forward a little bit. I'm really sorry, I'm getting the hang of this. The recommendation is to approve the annexation and assign it the rural residential zoning designation. It's within our annexation policy boundary, it complies with our growth management boundary, and our land use planning designation, and our general plan. The rural residential zone would be appropriate for that land use category. Any questions? It's about, if you could help me mention, it's about 53 acres.
Is the rural residential just a holding zone until we have a better right?
Right, usually that we, at annexation, it's assigned rural residential, and then when they come forward with a more specific plan, a preliminary plan of how it would develop, then we can set the appropriate zoning at that time.
What's the general plan?
R-115.
General plan is the state, that's the residential.
Okay, thanks, Von.
Thanks, Von.
Can I entertain a motion to go into a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Argyle, second by Councilman Marshall, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we're in public hearing, anyone that would like to address us?
Hey, how are you? So I'm Don Minden Hall, was actually looking forward to catching up with Mike tonight, so a little sad he's gone. But I'm here actually representing the Goodwin family. So we have actually begun the process with the city and taken ever some recommendations from the DRC to step in with the annexation and come in as an R-115. So that's the goal. We were in the DRC a couple months ago, we heard about this last DRC the morning of, and so we missed this one. But the goal, you know, where it does fit your general plan, that's what we'd like to have the city consider, bringing us in as an R-115. We're in process with all the actual paperwork, we met with Kim again even before this meeting, to kind of make sure all of our ducks are in a row moving forward. But that's what we'd ask, is just that you guys can kind of consider bringing us in as an R-115, so.
Okay, so are you asking for us to do that tonight, or do we still do our, or does that matter?
It does matter, I think you're asking that rather than the RR designation that you come in with the R-115.
We would have had a preliminary previously, but there were a couple changes from DRC that we went back to add an extra access, and then remove that road over a little bit more. So there's a few things, we've been taking every suggestion come to us to try to make that fit your needs, so we are asking that be considered tonight.
Okay, for the R-115, okay.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
Not right now.
Anyone else for this one? Okay.
I'm Minor.
Okay, can I get a motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Argyle, second by Councilman Euler, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we're out of public hearing, any questions or comments or concerns?
No, just, I appreciate, I know when this was initially brought up, we'd asked, or I'd asked, that staff approached some of the other property owners in the area to try and clean up that annexation, and it looks like that's been done, so thank you for those efforts.
And I'm good to go straight to R-115 tonight as well, so.
Yeah, it's general plan for that, so it's just.
If I could just maybe ask the applicant, or Mr. Minden Hall, a question, are you looking, as you go forward, are you looking at a straight-up subdivision, or in the end, are you going to want a master plan development?
No, just a straight-up subdivision, it's just, yeah, just, we're looking, it would be, really, the family wants to retain the house and the land, but we understand you guys wanted it all brought in as one R-115, which makes sense, so there's not some confusion or precedent moving forward. So that would be just the 13, 14 lots, if you include the house with the two acres, so.
And are you, if you go back to the image, Nick, of maybe the whole area?
We're 8.64 acres, so, okay, you can kind of, zoom on that at all?
Not there, but I'll try to, I think you're.
Everything on the east.
Yep, that's where, right there down, and then that line left across, just the left, we don't include, yeah, and then up there, right there. And there's a slight diagonal corner taken out by the power light easement.
And so I think the question here is, for you as a council, do you want to designate this property, and how many acres did you say you were?
8.64.
So the 8.64, using that number, that as the R-115 and the remainder as RR?
So 8.64 is the whole, yeah, the whole Goodwin piece, and then anything else beyond that, that's up to other applicants, or I don't know.
So I wonder, would it be easier that we wait for a site plan to designate just there so we're not making two adjustments tonight?
Where the R-115 matches with the general plan, I don't think you'd be out to have a straight-up subdivision, the possibility of a straight-up subdivision of the R-115 zone. If somebody comes in and wants to have a master plan development, that's a different process that they would need to go through in order to receive that, the possibility of the designation of a master plan development, if they wanted to do something different than what the city code allows for the R-115 zone.
And you're still approving the preliminary plat, so this doesn't give us free rein to just do whatever, we're still going to make it fit and look like what you want.
So in the motion, would we designate the Minor Goodwin properties as the R-115 and everything else as the RR?
So we are specifically on the Goodwin property.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if the Minor also would make that.
So, can I speak at this point?
Yeah, if you come on.
Come on up, you enjoyed me. Pleasure to meet you, person. Nice to meet you. Yes, I'm Gary Minor. So I started the annexation process independent of the Goodwin circumstance. I own everything that is on the eastern side of this particular annexation, and I've just been working with your city office just to say, we weren't in any rush, but we saw what was happening to the south and around, so wanted to be a part of that process. And the Goodwin family had, Robert was the owner of that home and the eight acres, and he passed away not too long ago, and then I had already petitioned our 20-plus acres, and then following Robert's passing, that's when the city actually said, can we merge the annexation of your piece with Goodwin's? And then the city did diligence with the UPNL property. So it was under the recommendation of the city's staff that we merge all of those together. So based on what I just heard this evening, we would love the R-115 designation, if that's an option.
I think in essence, for the applicants, it does remove one significant step, certainly some time involved in a zone change. The R-115 standards are what they are, and so if it's a straight-up subdivision, even though you do approve the preliminary plat at a straight-up subdivision, I think it's pretty much administrative, so you just have to approve it anyways. That's not a bad thing, you've set the standards and the codes for what a straight-up subdivision is, and if they meet it, then they can do it, right? I think I would probably recommend, as we consider this, and I don't know how we'd write this, so Von would have to probably be the one to tell you how to do this, but I think everything underneath the corridor. to do this, but I think everything underneath the corridor, everything underneath that, either land owned by Rocky Mountain Power or underneath the corridor itself, maybe remain that as an RR, so that there isn't an assumption of the ability to develop houses underneath that. There shouldn't be because there's an easement, right? Those power lines, you can't build underneath. I think that would be a good, a good thing to keep as the rural residential designation as we look towards preserving that as corridor, as well as keeping people aware of, this is not a place we want to see development happen. Outside of that corridor, I don't think there'd be any concern with this following the remainders of the properties being zoned R-115 at this moment of annexation.
So, I guess, question I would have, Seth, is with this being a public hearing, was it noticed that this would be for rural residential, and would it need to be re-noticed now that it's R-115? So, it was noticed that there would be a possible zone change to rural residential, but the code allows you to take the planning commission recommendation, then adopt it, modify it, or reject it. You can do whatever you want with the recommendation.
Sorry, I wasn't going to say anything, I just hit the mic. But now, I feel like I have to say something. It does seem simple. It also seems like it's, it would be nice to see a plan in front of us before I said R-15, R-15, R-115. Thank you. I have, it's been too long. But again, I think, like Seth said, it is, it's a standard, if it's a standard design, we're going to say yes anyway, so it's probably just skip a step and move right forward and let the two parties do what they need to do. So, I could be supportive of that as well. How do you carve, you want, in the motion, you're going to have to carve out Rocky Mountain? One question I have is, I'm not sure this is going to work. This corner here, is that owned by Rocky Mountain Power, or is it owned by Goodwin?
Yes, that's Rocky Mountain Powers.
Okay. So, maybe a simple way to say it is, the parcels that are owned by Minor and Goodwin be designated R-115 and the remainder RR.
Can you do that, Shane?
Good luck.
I still think it would be valuable to at least, once you change the zone, then it's hard to go back. So, I'm just pulling up the map really fast, making sure I, we understand the properties.
Are there, yeah, are there others outside of the corridor that are...
No, I don't think so. I think they're all owned by Rocky Mountain. Who's to the immediate west? Mr. Mendenhall again, I just, sorry, I don't know your first name.
Don.
Don.
So, what was the question, sorry?
Just immediately west of your property, is that also owned by...
That's all going to be, I mean, that easement, a Rocky Mountain, I think that's all, I can pull it up on here too, but I think that's all the power.
That's already the approved subdivision.
No, not, yeah, not immediate, just immediately connected to you, not...
Yeah, like, you're talking about rectangle running down.
Yeah, or, get over there, come on. Get over there.
Yeah, that.
Oh, it disappears right when I get there.
The good portion of the front of that is all easement, so I'm not sure, let me look at, I can pull it up on here and tell you, but...
Yeah, there's just no land information on the county website, so it's not showing up with an owner. So, I can't, I can't tell if it's Rocky Mountain or not.
You can see the, to the north, where the city has already improved and developed, as you go across 100 South there, you can see the angle of the UPNL lines going right through.
Right, right, no, I...
As that goes southeast.
Right, yeah, and I can see the lines here, it's just this parcel, this parcel right here doesn't have any, land owner information isn't showing up.
It is UPNL's property.
Okay, yeah, and that's what I'm assuming, but I just can't verify. So, I think you could say, all of the other lands, even though, so this parcel, we're assuming is Rocky Mountain Power. There's a parcel right here, it is Rocky Mountain, there's a parcel right here, it's also Rocky Mountain, and this parcel right here is Rocky Mountain Power. So, if you, if you left those parcels owned and under the control of Rocky Mountain Power...
If we just said the Minor and Goodwin parcels are RR15, anything else is going to stay rural residential that would cover if we missed one? A property that we missed would have to come back and request a zone change.
Yeah, the remedy, if we miss something, then they would request a zone change.
That is, that'll be sufficient. Well done. Welcome back. Welcome back. It's that.
Hour fifteen minutes to get here. Am I doing it?
Yeah, let's hear you do it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the Minor Goodwin annexation with the zoning of the Minor and Goodwin properties only to be RR15, based on the findings that are outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Marshall and a second by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say yes.
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 And is this a roll call? Okay, Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So, this is passed.
Clarify R-115 instead of R-15.
Oh, did he say R-115?
He said R-15.
I said R-15, and give them with me like I was wrong. You didn't correct me, so I thought I was right. I had it. All right, then I'm not going to do it now. It's rural residential.
Wow, for helping you.
He's very difficult to work with, isn't he?
Don't find out.
We liked him more.
Von, do I need to restate my motion?
We understand what you did.
We understand, but one thing you didn't say is the remainder would be RR. So, that might be helpful.
So close. Okay, so the answer is yes, please restate it.
All right.
It's R-115, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I move that we approve the Minor Goodwin annexation with a zone for the Minor Goodwin properties only as RR15. The remainder properties will be zoned RR or rural residential.
Include the findings?
And I'll include the findings in the staff report.
Second.
This is the last one for me.
That was you? Okay, motion by Marshall, second by Argyle. All in favor, say yes.
Roll call vote.
Oh, yes, roll call. Marshall?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Argyle?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
We're not this normal.
We'll be more professional the next go-around, for sure.
Thank you. Where are Cowboys' paths next?
Right.
It's Gary. It's...
Okay, so, moving on, our second public hearing is an ordinance regarding the Warner Flower Farm zone change.
We're going to get our practice tonight, so this one, that little yellow piece there, we zoom in, and it's the, the property is owned by the Catholic Diocese, there's a single, single-family residence there. These, there were like two or three lots that were, they've combined into one lot now. It has this utility service for that house, and the proposal is to do a wholesale flower farm, to grow flowers, to sell to different flower retailers. To do that, they recommend, the recommendation is to change the zoning to rural residential, which allows agriculture and accessory buildings in that, in that zone. Other than that, it's, that's basically it with that recommendation. Any questions about that?
It's not, it's not like a greenhouse, it's just open fields of flowers?
It's mostly, yes, I think you're right.
There will be a greenhouse.
Trying to...
It will be covered, 14 feet.
It's actually a high tunnel, not like a polycarbonate greenhouse. It's just a high tunnel.
Yeah, it will be covered, though.
Okay.
Should we go ahead and go into public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
I move we go into public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Marshall and a second by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Reed Warner, Warner Family Flower Farm, which is actually Fiori Deoli is the name of the business. We've been working with Catholic Church to see about being able to utilize the property. It's been a vacant field for 15 years or more. Other people had approached him, and when we approached him with the idea of doing flowers and farming, they thought that was an amazing opportunity to utilize the property. And working with the BRC, it was split into three different parcels. They asked that it would be combined, working with the church. We were able to get that combined into a single parcel. So, that, and then we're requesting that it go rural residential, just to help with the agricultural piece of end-use of the property. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. There will be a, a high tunnel is what it is. It's just a steel hoop with plastic over it.
Will that stay up year-round?
Yes. And the height of it is 15, well, the actual height is 12 feet from, to the highest point.
And will the public or vendors or people come to you to get the flowers, or do you cut them and then deliver them?
So, we will have a few florists that will come and pick up flowers.
Oh, okay.
But it's only wholesale, so you must be a registered florist designer to be able to come and pick them up. They would be ordered, we work with a collective called Picklink. They have a store out of Midvale on 72nd, so we do a lot of our flowers go there, and then our local florist down here can come and pick them up from our location. We're guessing seven or eight, and that's only one day a week.
Okay, and they would just pull right up on, pull over on 1400 East to pick those up and go on their way?
They can even, they can pull in.
Oh, okay.
If, if you want to go back...
You have a little parking area?
There's a little parking area for it. So, right there, right along those two sheds, there's parking right there and behind it.
Okay.
And it can accommodate probably four or five cars at any time.
So, you have a single tunnel?
I have two tunnels. I just haven't decided if I'm going to put both up. It's a lot of work.
Do you plan on using the entire properties, well, both parcels for flowers?
So, the only parcels that are for the flowers is this back corner. This will be our storage and work area. This is a growing area with the tunnel, and then this is an open growing area. So, right along the houses here are the, is the growing, the open growing, and then along the fence is, will be the tunnel. The house owns all of that. It's not working there, we go. This is all owned by the house. So, the current renter there has control of that whole part of the property.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Is there any other comments? Matt, if you came for this one, you may as well come and speak.
Matt Hargreaves, work with Utah Farm Bureau, also a backyard neighbor to this farm here, so supportive of that, to have a good use of the land that's there as opposed to just having weeds that are there. And so, just on behalf of the Farm Bureau as well, we're supportive of these urban farm concepts, as it supports our communities. Obviously, this is for cut flowers as opposed to growing food, but supportive of them going about and doing it the right way, so no other Warner's will do that, so we're supportive. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, anyone else? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, my name is Nathan Burston. I live at 1355 East, 1520 South. That's the house in the corner right there, so I share the north and the east property line with the field. I just want to say that I built the house there, I've been dealing with the nasty field there since we built the house. It's been a nuisance, it's been a hazard. I try to scrape the sidewalk for the kids in the winter, you know, so they can walk to school, but the weeds grow up so tall in the fall, then they fall over on the sidewalk, you can't scrape it very well. It's been a safety issue, the weeds grow so high, people can't see around when they try to turn around that corner, so people scoot out in 1400. They're putting their cars clear out in the streets to try to get it to see around. And of course, as some of you may know, I even burned down the field one time, so...
Purposely?
Uh, no, it was unintentional. I was grilling, and my grill was a little too close, and it burned the field down. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up about that is when the officer came and talked to me, I said, hey, this is my fault, I own this, send me the bill, I was irresponsible. And he turned to me and he says, no. He says, that field is overgrown, it was a safety issue to begin with, this should've never happened. The grilling aside, that should've never happened. So, the reason I wanted to speak to you is from the neighbor's standpoint. I fully support anything that the Warner's do there, I fully support anything they grow there. It's not only taking care of a safety issue for the cars, it's taking care of a safety issue from fire hazard from me. And they're just improving the entire neighborhood, they're improving the community, and they're proving, providing benefit to the city. So, no matter what they do, no matter what they plant, they have my full support, at least from there, and I just want to make sure that goes on record, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Nathan.
I'm Dustin Peterson. I also live on that street, just a ways down from Nathan, and I just want to second what he said. There have always been weeds on that lot, and it's been so bad, my children walk down the street to go to school, and they have to avoid that side of the street because there will be large plants, there will be bees and wasps in there. They always have to stay on the south side. And so, I'm really pleased with the work I've seen the Warner's do so far. It's been clean, people can walk on that side of the street now. It looks beautiful now, it's well-kept, and yeah, there's my two cents. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Warner's, you have a lot of support, you might want to do some other things in the community.
Yeah, I'm David Bush. I'm Reed Warner and Yollette Warner's neighbor across the street, right around the corner from the property there, and I'm in favor of rezoning it as an RR. I've seen Reed and Yollette work so diligently to develop their wholesale floral business. In fact, when I moved here six years ago from Texas after my retirement from the Air Force, it was wonderful to meet the Warner's, and they are, they've really been working hard to develop this business, and it's really improved that area.
You may not know this, but we would've been neighbors if I wouldn't have moved.
All right.
Fun fact.
Yeah, that is a fun fact.
You lucked out.
That's right. After 25 years in the Air Force, I picked Spanish for, you know...
You just moved in six years ago, you said? And I moved out nine, so...
All right.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Euler, second by Councilman Argyle. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay. Any further questions, or can I get a motion?
Well, I'm not going to make it. I've got texts all over. It was a terrible motion, so.
I'll go ahead and make it. I move to approve the proposed zone change from R-18 to rural residential based on the findings and conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Euler, a second by Councilman Argyle, and this is a roll call vote, so Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So, that is approved. Good job, guys.
Mayor Protam, just a quick comment. We were, when we first heard this as a DRC, we had a couple of concerns that were mostly procedural, but frankly made it really difficult, and suggested to Mr. Warner to do something which I think collectively we wondered might be, might be a deal breaker, having the church change some things about the property that, that on paper seemed really simple, but in theory sometimes are over, maybe too difficult. And it was pretty impressive to have him come back to the DRC and say, all right, I was able to do everything you asked me to do and had some additional insights. So, we were really pleased and impressed working with him as well, taking on a really difficult task and adjusting something, and boy, we really hope the weeds aren't a problem anymore, so you can grill, your neighbors can grill unfettered and unhindered. Nobody likes people that start fires on properties. I don't know anybody that would start a fire on some property personally, so.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to our third and final public hearing ordinance regarding the Green Acres Plat F zoning amendment.
First of all, I'm sorry, I'm filling in for Dave Anderson today, so I'm not as good at this as he is. But this one, I think, is, is fun for me because it's, I'm a nerd. It's three lots, and there's no increase to the density of this project. It's simply to readjust property lines to follow existing fence lines. But to do that, one of the lots would drop below nine thousand square feet, so there's a need to amend the zone to the R one eight. So that, it's really just changing the legal status of these, of these lots to make them all conforming to our zoning.
So is that our doing, or did they come to us? Is that just like a little?
I'm not sure the origin of this, if it was applicant originated or the staff, I don't know.
Applicant?
Yeah, so, let me sort of point here. So this one would be below nine thousand, just by a few hundred square feet, if the lot line adjustment goes forward with the subdivision. But again, it's the same three houses, the same fence lines, it's just to make the lot lines conform to what's existing today.
Okay. Any questions? Yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Marshall, second by Councilman Argyle, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any public comments? Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Argyle, second by Councilman Marshall. All in favor say yes. Oh, did I say? Euler, Marshall. Second, first, okay, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Okay, any questions? Okay.
I move to approve the proposed Green Acres State Plat F Zone Change, based on the following findings and, based on the findings in the staff report.
Second. I can second that.
You can.
Because I have a vote, whereas a real mayor doesn't.
I hope he's listening.
Okay, so motion by Councilman Marshall, second by Councilwoman Beck. This is also a roll call vote, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is approved. Okay, moving on to number nine, new business. The first one will be item A, resolution approving the Utah Inland Port Interlocal Agreement.
Thank you. We're going to have a couple of us potentially address any questions you have and things you'd like for us to discuss as we review this port, the resolution with, between Spanish Fork City and the inland port.
There we are.
So, first of all, we're, the inland port area is, is outlined in this, uh, this image that shows the north and west portion of our community, surrounding, areas surrounding the Spanish Fork Airport. It's, I would, I would say, describe it maybe in this way, half of the properties are developed in some form, about half of them are not. It's a very rough generalization, but that, that is the nature of, of this general area. I want to highlight, this image is, is of the exact same properties, but this shows you the zoning for the area that we are talking about today. The zoning designations for the properties, almost in their entirety, exist in some sort of entitled right as of this moment. And by that, I mean if it's zoned industrial, which this gray, uh, this gray designation here, all of that area that you see in the dark gray, including the airport, which is kind of hollowed out so that you can see where the airport is, it's also zoned industrial. It's already zoned industrial, which means that a landowner today, whether they be a farmer or a business that does industrial development, they have an entitled right to, according to our code, do something on the property that is inside of that industrial zone. So if a farmer today says, I want to be done farming and I want to put up some sort of, uh, a business there, some tilt-up structure, or maybe sell their land to somebody that wants to do some, some warehousing, manufacturing of some kind, they have the ability to do that by right today.
Sorry, I raised my hand, I was going to ask you a question.
Yeah, please.
Don't want to interrupt.
Did you, I thought you were telling me my three minutes were up.
Your three minutes are up here.
I'm done, I'll sit down.
No, Seth, I was going to ask you, how long has the airport been there? And then, speaking of the industrial zoning, how long has that area been zoned industrial?
Great question. I wish I knew the exact year that we opened up the airport, maybe Chris can find that. I think the airport's been as long as Chad's been alive, which is twenty, maybe twenty-five years.
I wish.
Plus or minus. Yeah, the airport's been there a long time. I would say probably, well, I don't know, a long time. Longer than probably all of us have been alive, but I bet you'll get a text message from your dad that'll give us a better answer to that question. It's been a while.
So the, the airport club, Springville Airport Club, started it, and I want to say fifty-four years ago. And I may be wrong on the years, but they were the start of it, woodhouses.
I bet before we're done, yeah, I bet before we're done talking about this, I would ask you a question. Certainly not twenty years.
This, this source says the summer of nineteen thirty-one.
There you go. A long time. The second question you asked is what?
How long the property has been zoned.
Oh, thank you. I'll jump to this slide and then I'll go back to the other one. This is actually an image of our city's zone, zoning map, as it looked in the year nineteen ninety-nine. So that's about twenty-four years ago, and, and you can see, again, this area that is gray is, is still a designation for our industrial zone. The only thing about this image that is different than today is, is the size. Let me highlight what, what I mean by that. The city's boundary in nineteen ninety-nine would have been this. Whatever you see in gray is, yeah, probably the, the western edge of the city in nineteen ninety-nine. We don't have any land use authority to, to zone outside of our city limits, so we can't zone something industrial or whatever if it's not inside of our city limits. You might say, well, that's kind of goofy, why was the airport outside of the city's boundary back in nineteen ninety-nine? And it wasn't. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, the airport runway ended, ugh, come on. The airports, the runway ended just to the east of, of that, or just to the, yeah, east of, of that designated spot there. And then, man, these are being a little bit goofy today. You can just use your mouse and do that for me, you know what we're talking about. And we had to extend the airport runway right around two thousand ten, two thousand eight, somewhere in there. We had to extend the runway, actually shift it westward a little bit because of some encroachment on the eastern end. And so that was the end of, of the city and the end of the runway at that time. So I highlight this to show that at least for twenty-four years, where we have really good maps and such for digital maps that we can put into a presentation such as this today, shows that this area has been planned for, not just planned for, but even actively pursued. When we put a, a zone that is a productive zone like industrial, or just a moment ago where you said you wanted to put R one fifteen in this area, that's you signaling to the landowners and to the world, this is what we expect to see here. And so we've been, we've been, thank you, we've been sending that signal, if you will, by the zoning designation that exists for at least twenty-four years, and certainly it goes back further than that. But this image should, gives you an idea. So, short answer, or long answer to your short question, at least in nineteen ninety-nine, it looked fairly similar. So if you go back a slide and look at this area, you can see that, that the area has grown, and, and you can actually see, this is the outline of, the current outline of the city today. This kind of dotted line here, and, and that is now our westward boundary of, of this project area. And for the most part, it's also zoned industrials. As you have brought properties into the city through the annexation process in this area, you have also said, let's just bring that in as industrial. So, we have been, with this kind of being the highlight, we have been pursuing and, and showing this as not only the general plan for the area, but the active law of the land, that it is zoned industrial for more than a couple of decades, giving business owners, landowners, and the public constructive notice that this is the intent for the area. And for the last decade, specifically the last decade, and, and maybe in earnest since about two thousand ten, certainly two thousand twelve, we've had a number of projects come looking in the area and wanting to develop on parcels that are inside of what is the VERC industrial project area. And in the end, those sites, although very desirable because of their location, access to different utilities, and, and at least, I shouldn't say access to utilities, but knowing the availability of utility resources that we have in the city, they've wanted to locate here, but for the cost of extending the infrastructure to those, it has become, time after time, at least three projects have fallen through. They haven't been able to proceed because the cost of extending the utilities into that area has just been too much. And so as a council, as a, as staff, we have been working on this now for the last three or four years, identifying how can we work together with landowners and, and other stakeholders to facilitate any kind of development and movements in the area. And we were looking first at an, a traditional RDA, and that was in fact the, the designation and tool that we were focused on most. And until a number of months ago, as we began looking at some of the additional tools that the inland port authority has, has given to them, tools given to them by the state, decided to look and investigate those tools and have found them to be advantageous for the whole community. Not just for this project area, but beneficial to the whole community as we work together with some of the tools that they have. And so in, in sum, maybe to say, we're, we're not looking really to do anything different about this project area than what we have been wanting to do for more than twenty years, and specifically nothing different than what we've been trying to accomplish for the last few years here. By bringing in the port, we, we just simply gain access to a couple of additional tools. There may be some that think, please.
So, what you just barely said right there, I think, is partially why there are folks that are concerned. By bringing in a port, um, by bringing in the port authority's financial tools, we can further our project, our goals to the city. I think we need to be very clear as we keep talking about this, we're not bringing in inland port. We're not bringing LA Long Beach. That's not what this is. We can argue all day and night about whether it's I one, I two, industrial, or residential, whatever it might be, but this is our land use plan, our cities. For the last several years, it's not a port. At least, I don't, I mean, we can probably, someone here in this audience probably would disagree, but we're bringing in a partner to help facilitate our vision. We're not bringing in a port.
Right.
Is that wrong? I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it, but please tell me if I'm wrong, because if I am, I have some crow to eat, probably.
Our land use code is still the law.
We're still the land use authority.
And we are, we still remain the land use authority. And so what we allow, what, what we allow in our I one or I two, whatever zone ends up being in the area, what we allow there in our code today, and what we allow maybe in some future revisions based on requests or whatever, you as the city council are the land use authority, and, and there is none of that that is ceded or given to the inland port.
So Seth, is it fair to say that even if the city chose not to use the tools that you described of the inland port, we could still develop, this, this property is already zoned industrial, eventually it would still develop the same way it would if we used the inland port?
I think the answer, this, the quick and easy answer to that question is yes. And I want to maybe make one distinction clear. You, you used a word which you didn't probably know you used, but you said "we." And, and that is something that I want to make absolutely clear, clear. This is not something that the city or the port is developing. And, and there might be this thought that we have come in and owned, right, purchased outright, or, or maybe even through eminent domain taken. None of that is the case. But rather through the zoning tools, as well as the, uh, some of the different tax increment or tax differential tools that come available through an RDA process like we were looking to do, or this port process, this port project that we're looking to do today. Either one uses the same tax, tax increment financing types of opportunities. Those are the tools, basically the tools that we use. We aren't buying or developing anything. In fact, in, other than public facilities, the city isn't the developer, right? The, in one of the recent, in one of the previous annexation discussions, I think Mr. Minor said, you know, just west of there, that project where the city has gone in and built those roads, or, no, the city didn't build those roads. Those are, those were built by whoever the landlord was, and, and they're doing a project just like, you know, subdivision like has been done all throughout the community and throughout the world, right? We don't do that. We facilitate it through our, our laws and such, but we aren't the ones that are doing it. And so if there are issues in, in the land, if there are environmental issues, that's something that we've certainly heard some comments tonight, and we, we continue to hear through some of the conversations that we receive on email. All projects are required to follow current environmental laws, and candidly, environmental laws don't really start with us. The, the more stringent laws exist at both the state and federal level. So all development requires, if there are wetlands in, in any of these properties, then they have to be protected, worked around, and, and maintained according to rules and regulations by maybe specifically the Army Corps of Engineers. If someone were to remove or, or damage or want to replace any of those, the requirements for replacement of environmental, let me be more specific, with wetland properties is quite stringent. We went through a process several years ago, we had to eliminate a wetland, a small wetland parcel up in the canyon to preserve one of our significant water sources. And we were, we were requi- we were required by the Army Corps of Engineers to replace that wetland within the same drainage area four to one. So if that project was a half an acre, we were required to, to build and, and nurture, cultivate, and maintain new two acres of wetlands, which we did that in order to protect that water source. But that, those kinds of laws are placed today, and, and so development that occurs in our community around Utah Lake, around, in this area, there's the Dry Creek. Development that occurs around these areas must adhere to twenty twenty-three standards and will adhere to whatever standards as they come.
Can I interrupt right here? Because I feel like this is the appropriate place to also add, when Sarah brought up that Spanish Fork is an Indian farm reservation, there's going to be laws that we, well, the people that develop also have to follow.
For sure, yeah.
Okay.
And so none of that, nobody, nobody turns a blind eye to that. And, and candidly, these properties have all been used and have been cultivated and have been functioning, whether they've been farm grounds, maybe ranch lands, or, or whatever the, the landowners have had in this area. I think we have some people that don't farm it, but they, they ride on it, they, they put some animals on there so they can enjoy them. Yeah, tho- those are issues that, that will have to be dealt with as we do development in the area. So with that, I want to invite, well, if you have any specific questions that you have for, we have a couple of port staff here that can address any questions that you have, and then we'll have Vaughn review that contract. So I'll step aside.
I've got one for him. Go, go ahead, Shane, I'll follow you.
For the port or for Seth?
For the port.
Seth, we, we call this the project, it seems like a bad name for it. It is, it is a, we're trying to facilitate our vision here with some financing tools, but each individual property owner will have their own project, their own set of rules, with their own development plan. We're not doing that. The port doesn't do that. We're, we are encouraging the development of this area to improve the tax base for our community by investing into the infrastructure. We're not investing into businesses or anything like that, right?
Correct.
So the, the project is a finance tool more than it is anything on the ground. Projects that get on the ground are something that the development community will eventually.
Yeah, and I don't know if this will help a ton, but maybe adding one more word to the end of that, that project area. I don't know if that helps, but I mean, to your point, yes.
It just feels like it's something tangible. As I was looking through these, I'm like, where is the plan? Why isn't included in this, this agreement? It's because it's our plan already, it's our city.
Yeah, and, and we have, we have master plans, right, to say that, number one, this area is our industrial area. That's part of the plan, number one. Number two is, every so often- Number two is, every so often, there's going to need to be a major collector road or an arterial road. And whether that's going to be exactly right here, or to the east or west, a thousand feet or whatever, that isn't decided because we don't want to say it's going to be on top of this house, right, or whatever. And so those things do get adjusted and moved around as facilitated by the landowners, maybe specifically at the time when it's ready and ripe. Every once in a while, we do go in and connect some of the last miles, but this, we typically do this development as development actually occurs. And we have master plans for all the water and sewer and power. And it doesn't say this is where each pole is going to be, but it does say in this area, this is what we're going to need, and this is generally how it will be. And if you're going to develop, this is what you're going to need to do. And so it isn't, it isn't all of the acreage totally combined, this is how it's going to be designed. But we have at this moment, I'd say, six or seven very large and capable development groups that have already purchased property in the area and are very capable and wanting to do projects in this area. I highlight that maybe just to finish some of my comments. They've already purchased that land, which means that somebody, the previous landowner, whoever they were, whether they were actively farming it, or maybe somebody that was holding on to it for whatever reason, they've already sold it to these groups. That wasn't at our request, we didn't, we had no party to that. In fact, the land purchasing happened, it started maybe two or three years ago. And so that is a farmer, or whoever, for whatever reason, they've said, I'm done farming, and want to sell it to whomever, and that's who they sold it to, right?
Would that change?
What do you mean?
Would that, would that philosophy of, it's the property owner's decision to sell. It wouldn't be, we wouldn't help facilitate that sale. The port wouldn't say, you must sell. It's going to continue on as the property owner chooses to continue on.
Yeah, thank you. There was a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, a landowner in this general area asked that same question, and they were very nervous, maybe because of some conversations they had with developers, I don't know. But they said, we fear that this industrial developer is going to force us to sell their land to them. And my answer was one of, I just angst for them, that that's un-American. We have no part in that. That is not how land transactions happen. They eventually might say, we don't want to be here anymore, and that certainly could be a reality. But we have, through our zone, the ability to do some things to protect them in terms of some separations and easements, walls, et cetera. But as long as, and my comment to them was, as long as you want to do what you're doing here, do it. It's your land, and if it fits what you want to do, do it. And the city is, we could, and I explained to them, there is a possibility that we could potentially, through eminent domain, force the purchase of some of your land, and I showed them on the map, and they said, well, that's where the road's going to go. I said, exactly. And you could expect that it might be there, and there might be reasons in the future that you'd say, you know, it's probably time to widen that section of road, it's getting dangerous. And that made sense to them in the discussion. But by, there is no, there is no, I think, law. I'm aware of, and certainly nothing that we've been party to, where the city comes in and says, you're going to sell your land to that guy. That just, that just doesn't happen. And if somebody says, that's what we did, or that's what's happening, I think they're misinformed, and I think if we together dug into some of the facts of the stories that they're hearing, we'd probably find that there's something missing in those details. So that's just not what we do.
So Seth, let me ask one of Mr. Westwater's questions, and see if either you or the port authority can answer this. But if this property is already within the city, it's already been annexed, it's already zoned industrial, which means those landowners today could propose something and move forward on an industrial development. If that's already in place and they can do that. His question was, do we really need the port? Are they necessary? So how do those landowners benefit by having the port authority come in and do what they do? And how do the residents of Spanish Fork benefit?
Yeah. This really goes back to something Councilman Marshall said in terms of the tools that we have. By combining and partnering with the port at this area, we have access to a few other tools that we just simply don't have according to Utah state laws that exist today. And so we have found value in what we want to accomplish with our vision of the area in partnering with the port and having access to the tools, financing mechanisms that they have in place. I think as a general rule, the residents of Spanish Fork will see what the vision you have already proposed and have had in place for more than twenty years. They will begin to see that vision unfold more consistently, right? I think if you drive in the area today and maybe along I fifteen, you see these large, these large structures going up right now. And these are actively under construction. This one right here, I believe, is occupied. This one's under construction, and so is that one. You see some additional work happening just across our border in Springville, and that's, if you will, phase one of this. It's not phase one, because we've got a lot of projects in the area already, but it's phase right now, and and this will facilitate the movement of utilities further to the west. And candidly, this airport creates a very large impediment. Because I can't run a water system that ends on the south end of the airport and then begins on the north end. I have to connect it. But that's a thousand feet, or you know, whatever the distance is, that somebody has to run in order to make that system connected. It's really expensive to do that, and there's no connections in the middle of it, right? And so there's just things about this area that make it difficult. Again, back to the tools. The port gives us better tools than we had with just the RDA laws as they exist. As a resident of Spanish Fork, I think I would stand to benefit in this way. The diversification of our property tax base makes it so our property tax can be more based on other uses than just residential. Spanish Fork is mostly residential town. We have some commercial, we have some industrial. But the vast majority of our lands are residential. We're not a bedroom community like, say, Mapleton or Salem, but we are heavily residential. On the greater view, the Nebo School District is absolutely a residential school district. And their property tax is so heavily influenced by, their property tax rate is so heavily influenced by the fact that most of their taxed properties don't pay taxes on forty-five percent of the value. By that, I mean, your house, my house, receives a forty-five percent property tax value exemption. And an industrial or a commercial property doesn't. They pay taxes on a hundred percent. And so this will diversify our tax base. And right now, these properties are generating a tax of, it's mostly green belt, so a tax of, honestly, ten or fifteen, maybe twenty dollars a year, based on the agricultural use and the green belt designation. As those go from zero, you know, basically close to zero taxable value, and somebody puts a hundred million or two hundred million dollar facility on that property, the taxable value goes from zero to two hundred million. And the Nebo School District and the other taxing entities, including Spanish Fork City, will receive tax differential, tax increment. And that will provide for additional resources that you and I as residents aren't paying in our property tax. I don't know that any one entity will lower their property tax rate, but I imagine it will make it so they don't raise taxes maybe as fast, because they're receiving the growth from industrial developments in this area.
Thank you.
I'm going to let Scott, you want to come up? Any questions for him, and then we'll have Vaughn.
Scott Wolford, W O L F O R D, Vice President of the Project Area Development Team for the Utauland Port Authority. It is such a privilege to be here, Mayor Protem, City Council. We're very excited about this project. It's not as neat as some folks make it sound. These are public financing tools, and we hope through this partnership and collaboration that the city's vision for this area, we can aim those tools and help accomplish that. Very excited about it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is the port authority a private entity?
It is not. We are a Title XI state entity. We think we're a state entity. Some folks in the governor's office say, well, you're kind of a state entity, but we are Title XI in code.
So you would have eminent domain authority?
I'm going to hedge, no, except in a very limited case, which would be, we do have eminent domain to create a port facility. There's nothing there that screams port facility today. And if we were to do that in the future, through the twenty-five years of the project area, it would be in collaboration with Spanish Fork City. I cannot imagine a scenario where eminent domain would need to be used. We would be loath to exercise that.
Let's say there's a road that needs to go through there.
Yes, sir.
And the property owner is unwilling, and eminent domain had to be applied. Would that be you?
No, we can't do that. Not for a road, correct.
Okay, okay. So you're, it's not, it's not the broad application of eminent domain like we have. It's very specific to a thing.
If for the region, there had to be an L.A. Long Beach gantry crane style facility, which again, no. We could do that. We can't do your road.
Okay, alright.
And we're not going to do an L.A. Long Beach gantry crane facility in Spanish Fork, Utah.
No, you are not. Okay.
No regulatory authority. We can't boss around. No land use. We're kind of wimps on that end, but the public financing tools that we've been given are very powerful. And again, we're very excited to leverage those on behalf of Spanish Fork City.
I think it was Denise that brought up the environmental impact study. Why wasn't that ever done, or can you talk to that, please?
Yeah, EIS kind of has a narrow application when you need to use it, and if it needs to be done, again, we're not regulatory, we can't compel, we can't force. But we also can't circumvent. And so as the property owners develop, if an EIS is required, or if there's federal funding that needs to be accomplished, absolutely. They will have to do that.
Right.
Our environmental assessment is just so that as we create this project area, there are no surprises for the city council. That we think, we know how this is going to build out, and we think we know what issues may be moving forward environmentally. We have an environmental engineer on staff, and again, she's available to you through the twenty-five years of the project area.
On that same topic, I guess in a way, can you address or talk about the Tempanogus Native Americans? Is there any, have you had any contact or any communication with their tribe? Has anyone reached out to you? What's the steps there? What are your thoughts on that?
Neither have we reached out, nor have we been reached out to. We work very closely with the State Historic Preservation Office, Dr. Christopher Merritt and Dr. Dorina Kopp, who's the state archaeologist antiquities that does burial removable. They're wonderful people. I was their IT director for ten years. Again, we can't circumvent the requirements, we can't circumvent the negotiations, we're not landowners. So those things are going to happen, they could. We will facilitate the conversations, but we don't have authority to control. And they're wonderful. Dr. Merritt, Dr. Kopp, they're the best.
I think part of the challenge is you're not physically doing anything, so there's not a...
Don't make it sound mean.
I mean, the finance tools are important.
Thank you.
Okay, but you're not building something.
No.
You're not a developer that is going to put something tangible in the ground, so therefore, you're not reaching out to someone to say, is there something here?
Correct.
That's the person that's going to do that. That's their responsibility.
Correct.
The developer, whomever that might be. Okay.
As well as us, too.
Correct. It'll come through your planning commissioner, yes.
Yes, ma'am. We would, a big box, something, warehouse distribution, would come to us and say, we want to develop. And we would say, have you followed all the environmental rules? Have you talked to Chippewa and those folks about what may be out there? And they would have to follow that process. Doesn't change.
No, sir.
Scott, can you address the types of buildings or businesses that could be here? What could the inland port do for Spanish Fork to make sure that it's not just a bunch of warehousing that gets built in this area?
One of the tools that we bring is the ability to apply differential to incentives, post-performance incentives. And we've worked closely with your administrative staff to identify exactly what type of jobs and businesses you want in your community. And we can, we will work with the development teams to say, if you want to bring folks in, here are the things that we can help. We can also stack with the governor's office of economic opportunity and EDC Utah to make a really competitive package, again, to bring those businesses, those jobs that you want, not what we want, what you want in your community. We think it's a really, really good stackable package that we can do. There's not a lot of value, especially for your school district and for you, in just filling warehouse distribution out in that area. Now, we're all kind of addicted to Amazon Prime. Certainly, there's a place for that. We kind of need that close if you want that same-day delivery. But filling that area with warehouse distribution would be a wasted opportunity. And what we've identified with your city staff is kind of manufacturing good, paying, secure jobs for that area. That's what we want to incent, and that's what we want to work towards.
I think that's one of those tools that we've been talking about, that why we want to partner with the port. That ability right there to change some of what could potentially be out there. It's still I one, it's still industrial.
It's all yours, yep.
It's all within the, you know, our code of what could go out there, but it could be better with a partnership than if we went on our own.
Yeah, more connections, right?
Yes, sir.
I think too, one of them made a comment about stop, you know, increasing the population in Utah County. I'm not looking at this decision, we're not increasing the population.
We're not allowed to do that, Mayor Protem.
Well, I may have. I had four children. I did that eight. I mean, we all had children. I've built three homes here. I'm part of the problem, but I also want my kids here in Utah County. So I don't think us making a decision to do this is doubling any sort of...
We travel the state, and what we hear over and over and over off the Los Edge Front is our number one export is our kids. My mom grew up in Cedar City, and of the six kids, her five siblings, not one of them was able to stay. And we hear that over and over and over. Baxhelter County bleeds seven thousand residents every single day that leave the county to work. They shop, they lunch in other places, and then they come back because they love living in Baxhelter County. Having those economic engines local, keeping the people in Spanish Fork with the ability to have jobs here in Spanish Fork, we think is a huge benefit.
I think what you just said there, Stacy, is pretty important. The decision to do this, and then the following. This, we didn't decide to develop it like this. Now, the city council twenty years ago decided that this was industrial. We're just trying to realize that vision today, right? So the decision to do something has been, we've been planning this for a very long time. It changes a little bit in terms of the type of development that could come in. It could facilitate the large infrastructure investment that needs to be made for those type of developments that we want to come in. Otherwise, it is probably just light industrial or warehouse distribution without that type of investment. So it's, I know I keep harping on this, but it's, we're not deciding today to develop it somehow. We're deciding today to partner with somebody that can help us realize what a city council decided is the best use of that property or a redevelopment of that property twenty years ago. So I think we're furthering our goals, right?
And to piggyback on that, I think there's oftentimes that Mayor Mendenhall and our council has looked back twenty years ago and given credit to our previous council and mayor of, you know, our water and our fiber to the home. And maybe this decision tonight by doing this, in twenty-five years, a group can look back and say, hey, they were forward-thinking, this really helped our community. That's our hope. We're not hoping to destroy farmland. We hate the farmers. We don't want real food. We want everything from Costco. That's definitely not our intention. We're truly up here trying to make the best decisions possible.
And that, that farmer that wants to farm can continue to do that with or without the port's involvement.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't change at all.
No.
And like you said before, you're not a land use authority. You couldn't tell them something different if you wanted to.
Correct.
It would still be our job.
We don't want to, but we couldn't tell.
I understand.
We would love them to keep farming.
Absolutely, absolutely. Until that person decides what they want to do with their property, what this does is give them, if they make that choice, this is what it looks like, or what it could look like. So again, it is not something the port is asking us to do, to change. They're here to help us realize something. And it's not a, it's not a port. I feel like I'm just like piling on my encouragement. I do have some concerns about how we've written our local agreement, but from a land use perspective, we still own it, plain and simple.
Yeah. So with potential for job growth in this... So with potential for job growth in this area, if manufacturing were, were to come, I would imagine that that could cause a strain or likely will cause a strain on, on our roads, right? People driving to and from to get to work, trucks that are now transporting here and there. What connections do you have with UDOT and with UTA? Whereas you design and, and plan out something like this, you're also looking at transit, possibly having transit stops and stations in the area that can possibly take cars off the road and not add cars to the road.
We work very closely with both the partners at UDOT and at UTA. We'll have an associate VP that's assigned to optimize the project area and handle all of those things, including workforce development. We want to work with the school district for internships. The, the, one of the benefits you have is the adjacency to the Union Pacific line. We've been working with Iron County for the past several months. And this past week, BZI Steel got their first shipment of, of steel raw product that arrived by rail. And they've been beating that Iron Springs road for, for years and years. In Utah, 24% of our, of our traffic on our freeways and highways is commercial, heavy trucks that damage those roads. And the national average is only 12%. We really think we can optimize this industrial park. It's not an inland port. It really is an industrial park for rail service and minimize the impact of what trucks are gonna have. Obviously, not everything can go by truck, or I'm sorry, by rail. But, but we are going to try to help to optimize that area to minimize those impacts. Also, that differential can be used to, to build out the infrastructure to make sure the roads are maintained and correct size to accommodate the traffic that you have. We want to minimize the impact of rail in your area, minimize those crossings so it doesn't disrupt and make sure your public safety responders have adequate resources there. And again, all these are tools that, that you can direct where that differential goes to make those investments that you need to do. We'll furnish the information and study and work with you, but it's, the differential is yours to pledge. I think my three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vaughn, do you have something?
Yes, sir. I just want to go over a few of the nuts and bolts of the agreement. And the first thing I think is one of council member Marshall's comments that it seemed like an inland port is a misnomer. And the agreement changes that. We call it the Vert Industrial Park, which is maybe more of what it really is, is a park for industrial uses. So that does that. And in addition to that, recall that Seth talked about we considered doing different RDA project areas or a CRA. And we had negotiations with the different taxing entities on that. And the agreement is structured to continue what we were committed to those taxing entities. It's a 25-year project. And 75% of the tax differential will be used for the project, except in the cases of the taxing entities of Nebo School District and Utah County. With those, it will only be 20 years of their tax differential coming to the project and then only at 70%. So the final five years would be back to them as passed through. And then I think it was one of the last comments, I don't remember who made it, but the uses of the tax differential will be by agreement. The really, it's a little unusual for, I think I heard Scott say that they don't do interlocal agreements very often, if, if ever. So, but this is a partnership with them and we're walking lockstep with them and they, and they with us. This is to achieve our goals of where the tax differential should be spent within the Vert Industrial Park. Any questions from me?
My biggest question is why, why do we have a different year end for the three taxing, taxing agencies and not the full, what are there, seven? I don't know, there's four, three smaller ones or four smaller ones?
I'm not sure. There's Centia Water Conservancy District, the...
Skeleabedment.
Skeleabedment. Those are, to be honest, those are fairly small. So we were, when we started our negotiations with the school district and the county, those are the largest taxing entities. And we did that because it was a community reinvestment project area under the traditional redevelopment standpoint. And so that's by interlocal agreement. And to get them to come on board, that's the deal we struck with them. And when we were shifting gears to going to the port authority, we wanted to be consistent. And we didn't want to, you know, pull the rug out from under them and surprise them. Hey, it's 75% and it's 25 years. So we committed to honor those, those commitments that, or the promises that we made with, with those two.
Have we had communications with the other taxing agencies? Why not just be consistent? I understand not going back on, on our conversations with the county and Nebo, but why not just make it all consistent?
We reached out to them in the beginning phases of our RDA development and never did have any communications. Just, just were, were not able to connect with them. The project itself has a 25-year life anyway. And there is the possibility, and this is something I'd mentioned to you earlier, but really didn't get the ability to explain it maybe fully. The project has a 25, 25-year shelf life based on state law. And, and the port has agreed to re, to remit to us the last five years as if it wasn't a 25-year shelf life. It's very possible that in a year or five years or even 10 years or 15, we as a body say, we want to, we want to continue this on. We see what it's doing, but the 20 years isn't gonna be enough. We want to go the last five. So we can, we can turn that back and say, we want to go for the full 25. We can also say, we want to go for the full 25, but it's something less than the, the 75% amount or, you know, as, as the contract has, right? We, we can renegotiate those, those terms. And so I think what we've done is given ourselves actually some options by having it there. As, as we've negotiated at this moment, it gives us some options today, equal to what we thought we were doing. But then in the future, if we feel like... And, and the reason I think I can see this as a possibility for us is as development happens, year one, two, three, four, five, it'll take five, 10, maybe even 15 years for us to realize a lot of, and by realize, I mean see a lot of these areas develop, which means that the last few years of those 20 will be the ones that are most productive and generate a tax differential. And so it, it could be very likely that we'd say, we need, we need to leverage the last five years to, in order to facilitate this or that development. So I can see us maybe saying at a future day, let's adjust that. So I'd probably look at this maybe from the other lens, the other angle from where you're looking and saying, instead of bringing everybody back to the 25, I kinda like the idea that we've been able to create some diff, some difference that then says, if we want to do something different, year 21 to 25, we have the ability to do that.
I completely agree with that 100%. My question is, why not the other agencies? Why are they not in the same boat with us?
Yeah. And again, the simplest answer is, we've just never been able to talk to them. They've never reached back out to us, so...
So if they reached out and said, hey, we want to be, we would rather have the 20, 20-year. And if, if in fact we need to go to 25, we could, would we be, would we entertain that?
I, you would tell me what to do. I would say at this point, no. But that's, I, I don't make that decision either. So I would, I would look to you to say, would you entertain?
I just don't like the inconsistency and it just doesn't make sense to me. I, I understand the philosophy of why the city and the county and the, and the school district want to be at 20. And that makes total sense. I think just everyone on the, on the rolls ought to be the same. And then there's no confusion about who wins, win.
Yeah. And candidly, as we began visiting with the, with the port folks, they, they said, no, we do 75 for 25 years. We do 75 for 25 years. And, and I think we, it's not like we had to beat them up, right? But we said, this would be better for us based on the things that we've discussed. And so they...
I guess that's my point. Why wouldn't it be better for all of the taxing agencies?
Again, just for your, for the sake of your commitments that you've made. You hadn't made any commitments to anybody else, so you're not honoring that. You had made commitments and to those other entities based on the previous thoughts and plans. I think that's all we have.
Any further questions before we make any decisions or motions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll ask you all, because last time I made a motion, you all went, nope. I like the consistency in treating every taxing agency the same. I like the philosophy that Seth just described about how we would benefit from having a 20-year commitment versus a 25. And if we need to extend it to 25, we would. I think we should apply that to all, however many taxing agencies are in the tax, property tax. Which I think, is there just two more?
I think there's three. There could be four, but...
But to me, it just simplifies it. It's, it's the same for all of us. I don't like the excuse, because we didn't talk to them, they're not, they don't fall under.
Sounds like they're, they're pretty minor anyway.
They're super minor.
So I don't know that it's really gonna affect or change a ton.
I, I think from a dollar standpoint, at the end of the day, it's probably not a lot. But they're, they probably also would notice a small dollar amount. Do you know what I'm saying? Because they are so small. I don't think, I don't think it's gonna fund a road because we changed it from 25 to 20. I think so. I think they would, I think we should be treated the same. Yeah. I think we would want to be.
Maybe adding just some color to this, as we visit about the numbers and the possibilities, the, I think the number one question we're getting from those looking to leverage the dollars available today for projects today, based on tomorrow's differential. Every meeting that we're in, we're asked by those in the room, could you please go the full 25? You, the city, you, the school district, you, the county. Because there isn't enough for the 138 KB line and the sewer line, the lift station, the road, the regional road, et cetera. I think we found it's about a half a million dollars is what we think those other groups will be on the, on the back end, years 21 through 25. So five years of that, it's two and a half million dollars. In 25-year dollars, that's a lot less than today's two and a half million dollars, right? But it does make the calculus a little less even so. So I think at this moment, it is less desirable. Again, you guys do, do as you'd wish. They don't have any expectation and there is zero, 100% of, of zero or what they have today is...
Shane, have you been approached by someone? Is that why?
No, I'm just, it just, I'm just looking at the entire list and it, it seemed inconsistent. I think what Seth just described to me makes me want to be consistent more because it feels like we need more money. We all recognize that this potentially could take more money. And the city isn't going to lower theirs. So we'll use the other three taxing agencies' dollars for the last five years. It just, it just seems super inconsistent. And it is, I mean, I wish they were here saying the same thing. And it is sort of like, what am I arguing for if they're not gonna come and have this conversation with you? But I don't know that I want to balance the infrastructure investment on their dollar.
So would another option be to just do the full 25 for everybody?
I, I would not go that direction. I would say, put all of the taxing agencies in the, the...
20-year?
Yeah, the 20-year. Which, I mean, all you'd have to do to change the agreement would be, where is that?
They would have to agree to it, correct?
The inland port would, yeah. That, that is a fair question.
And also the other taxing authorities.
Nope.
But yeah, the inland port would...
No, it's just between us and the inland port.
You all, please speak up a little louder into your mic so we can hear better. Thank you.
Yeah, it would just be, it's just be between us and the inland port. So I think a question to ask Scott is, as you, as you, yeah, please, probably. I think it's probably, probably good to say, this is being streamed and recorded, so I'm, I'm not too worried about things being heard.
I would just remind, the project area will exist for 25 years. And if there's no revenue for the last five, it still exists. There's still an administrative burden that's gonna be born. And we've, we've stripped that away with the major three. If you take the rest away, it gets real difficult, real fast for us. So I, I understand the need for consistency. We feel like we've been, been over backwards with Spanish Fork City by taking what is statutory, 75, 25, 25 years. Nobody else gets an option. But we've honored that with the organizations that you've already negotiated with. And so I, I do understand, however, that negotiation never happened and our statute is 75, 25 for 25 years. Okay.
See, I feel more comfortable sticking with what they've proposed just because I don't know enough about what you're saying. So I get hesitant to like jump in on that.
And I understand, Shane, your, your thoughts on this. But at the same time, like you mentioned, if, if they're not here to speak for themselves, and I've not, I've not been reached out to by anyone from any of those taxing entities in any of the decisions that we've made. If they're not willing to, to speak up for themselves, I don't see a reason why we change what's already been agreed to.
See, that's why I asked now. I was just gonna go ahead and make the...
Before you make the, right, yeah.
And it, it's a very valid point, right? They knew we were doing this tonight. Maybe that's different if they're here. And so I get that completely and just...
They've also held a public hearing.
And, yeah. And I think having the conversation is also helpful. We did, we did talk about it. There are, there are reasons not to do it. There are statutory reasons not to do it. They're not here to argue for themselves, so I get it. I'm certainly not gonna die on that sword.
And it's, like, like Scott said, it's typically 25 years anyways. We, these other three taxing entities are just giving an exception to the rule, it sounds like.
And, and exception or just simply honoring the, a previous commitment, right?
Yeah.
I want, I want to just make, first of all, I want to thank them for coming forward and bringing issues and stuff like that. I also want to take an issue with, as I and these people up here on a, on a monthly, daily basis, when we make decisions like that, the first question I ask myself is, does it benefit Spanish Fork, period? And that's always been a question. I look back at the previous mayors and councils that's served in this position and they've always had the ability to look forward to the future. Stacy said it best, in 20 years, have, had we, did we make the right decision? We might not know that for a while. And I appreciate the concerns that are there. However, that's... He addressed each one of them. What I have is a real problem when you come up to the mic and accuse me and these people, good people up here that serve, of benefiting financially from this decision. Make sure you're recording this because I have a real issue with that. I do not benefit from my decision. The question I raise is the fact that you're recording and it says, Seth said, this is streaming and also recording, so you have the ability to go back and look at it. So why are you recording in me again? Which makes me think you're gonna use that for some other reason. I have a real problem when you accuse us of benefiting because of the decision we make financially or any other way. That's not happened. You want to accuse, then you better make sure you have some kind of an evidence. But when you step forward to a mic and accuse each one of us of doing that, I have a real big issue with that, both of you. Thank you. Make your motion.
You got it?
Yeah. I move to approve the inland port interlocal agreement based on the fines contained in the resolution and agreement.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Marshall and a second by Councilwoman Euler. All in favor? Roll call vote. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Okay, that is approved. And now we will go on to B, the Johnson subdivision preliminary plat reapproval request.
Mayor Protem and council members, this, this subdivision was a preliminary plat. It's about to expire, so they've asked to have it reapproved. There are a few things I want to point out is that it's, it's a master plan development. And so with that, there's flexibility in the design. And it's so long as they do not exceed the maximum permitted density for that zone that they're in. One thing that's changed since the original approval and the, tonight's plan is the addition of a parcel that's along the eastern boundary or borders the railroad. That was originally not included in the preliminary plat. It's proposed to be included again in this version. And by doing so, that would increase their lot count by two, two additional lots. Another unique feature is that on lot six, at the very north, I don't know if you can see it, here, is a cell tower that would be on one of the lots. Brad, it's a perpetual...
Brad, the, the, it's a perpetual easement on that, on that lot, so there's really no benefit, there's no revenue coming to that property owner, so there's no benefit for them to have it. They would just be paying taxes on a piece of property that they own that's subject to a perpetual easement. We thought it might be better to have that cell tower easement portion be dedicated to the city as a parcel as well, um, to relieve that tax burden from them, um, that future homeowner there. Let's see. Now, oh, and the final thing is that they'd like to change the, the name of the subdivision from Johnson subdivision to Willow Estates. Let me see if there's any things I should have showed you. Phase one, this would be approached from 3400 West and, and connect to the development to the south. Let's see, more of the same. Here you can see that, that long parcel that's adjacent to the railroad that would be dedicated to the city for a future trail or rail expansion. Any questions on...
When, when was this approved, Vaughn, do you know? Previous, yeah, did you say?
About a year ago.
Oh, so it's been...
Yes, it's, it's approaching its expiration, yeah.
Okay. For some reason, I don't remember this.
Any questions on this? The recommendation is that it be approved based on the findings and subject to conditions in the staff report.
Any questions? Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Johnson subdivision preliminary plat based on the findings and conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Euler, a second by Councilman Argyle, this is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, C is the amendment to the Quiet Valley Community Structure Plan. Vaughn, you're doing good tonight.
You are. You're going to... You know, I used to be a community development director, a long time ago.
You did? I never knew that.
And you decided to become a lawyer?
Yeah, I was a lawyer before I was a community development.
Oh, what else were you, Vaughn?
You were?
Yeah.
My gosh, we need to talk after, we need to have a get-to-know-Von night.
Let's see here, this is probably good, this is the place to start. Um, initially, in the Quiet Valley Community Structure Plan, it sets forth the, the standards that apply to the lots, and there was a discrepancy. In the table, it said the rear setback for the cottages and the single families would be 20 feet, but the illustration showed a 15-foot setback, and so, they'd like to simply clarify that now. It wouldn't be retroactive, it'd only apply to future building permits, so they would like to choose the 15-foot setback for the single-family and cottage lots that remain. It's approximately 32 lots, is that right, Curtis? Is what I counted? Um, let's see, and these are the, the lots that, that it would apply to, and it's kind of key that these, they back against the railroad, um, come on.
Well, there's actually 33, there's one on Plat B that's in the corner.
Oh, that's right, in the kind of cul-de-sac or knuckle.
That's right.
I can't get the thing to do anything. Yeah, several of the other lots back up against the open space, the power line corridor, the trail corridor, so that reduced setback in the rear really wouldn't have very much impact on any other homeowners in the, in the project. There is the one in a, it's in a corner or cul-de-sac or a knuckle of a, of a road that, because of the odd configuration, it's wedge-shaped to begin with, plus the front edge is carved out by the curvature of the, of the turnaround there, that it would be nice to have a little bit extra rear setback, but to reduce the rear setback for that one to build an appropriate single-family home.
And this was approved by DRC and Planning Commission, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the recommendation is to approve the amendment of the community structure plan as part of the design standards for Quiet Valley.
Okay. Any questions? Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve to, the amendment to the Quiet Valley Community Structure Plan and the amendments of the, on those certain lots.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Beck, second by Councilman Marshall, all in favor, oh, roll call, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Okay, and I approve as well. So, that is approved, and the last one is ordinance amending Title IX regarding disturbing landfills. Chad, I wonder if this has anything to do with you?
No, we need to continue this item to a future...
Oh.
...uh, council meeting. Uh, we have a couple more items we want to, we want to review in depth for...
Okay, so table that?
I move that we continue ordinance amending Title IX regarding disturbing landfills.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Euler and a second by Councilman Marshall, roll call vote, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Okay, that is tabled. And myself.
Motion to adjourn to redevelopment agency.
Second.
Okay, we will, we have a motion to adjourn to redevelopment agency by Councilman Argyle, a second by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we are now in RDA as board members, right?
Right.
Tara? Okay.
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent items in RDA by Councilman Argyle, second by Councilman Euler. Is this a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Board Member Euler.
Yes.
Board Member Argyle.
Yes.
Board Member Marshall.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
President.
President, acting chair, yes. Okay, now new business for RDA. Um, RDA resolution approving participation agreement with the Pheasant Run Properties.
Before he does that, I, I kind of liked how you did it one time earlier where you just said, Marshall.
I did too.
Argyle. Euler.
I personally liked that, because it becomes a mouthful.
Yeah, you just...
But then I felt so unprofessional.
It was, it was sharp, it was decisive.
Great, we're going right back to that now.
Board members, this, this item is a participation agreement for an existing business in the city, Mountain Country Foods, a, it's a large employer, they employ a lot and do a lot of business, um, in the city. They're proposing to build a new, a new str, new structure, a new plant, Plant 3, and it's partly underway there in the... Come on, please. Let's go back to the old... On the corner of 300 West and 1900 North, um, the agreement would give them about an $800,000 incentive for their fees that are required for that large of the building. It's, uh, almost 200,000 square feet and about, represents about $32 million in capital investment, so this would be another one of those projects that would kickstart the tax differential in the, in the Vert Industrial Park. And they estimate about 175 jobs in that, that plant there on 300 West. Beyond that, they would also be making improvements to 300 West and to 1900 North, which would be really beneficial to that, to that area, including, um, the north industrial redevelopment project area. That'd be the source of the funds to make this incentive payment, um, and it's because of the, the benefit that they're providing to that project area. Those, those infrastructure improvements, the jobs created, um, and obviously the, the capital investment that they're making is significant. So, that's the recommendation, is to approve the participation agreement, which also makes the finding a benefit to the north industrial project area. Any questions about that?
No.
Do, do we need to read this whole thing to approve, Vaughn?
Probably could use a benefit in it.
Or is it just motion to approve resolution participating agreement with Pheasant Run Properties?
Yes, if you could make, it, it's important to make the finding of benefit to the north industrial redevelopment project area. That's required by the statute.
So, yeah. The resolution also finds that such an inv, no, that's not it.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Such an investment and creation of jobs, a new facility would benefit the north industrial development area.
Second. Does that sound right, Vaughn?
The, under the administrative content, I think would be perfect. If you just, there's a proposed motion there.
Yeah, I've got it here. I move to approve the RDA resolution approving a participation agreement with Pheasant Run Properties and finding a benefit to the north industrial redevelopment project area based upon the findings contained in the resolution.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Euler and a second by Argyle. This is a roll call vote. Marshall.
Yes.
Argyle.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Beck, yes.
Motion to reconvene back into city council.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Argyle, a second by Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Motion to adjourn to closed session for land use.
Reasonable.
Reasonable litigation and land use.
Land transaction.
And land transaction.
Man.
I've never done that.
I haven't either, that's why I'm like...
Jesse's not here to do that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Euler and a second by Argyle. Roll call, vote, Euler.
Yes.
Argyle.